We call the regular City Commission meeting of Tuesday, April 14th, 2015 to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, may you take your roll please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Crisius?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Mayor Metzger?
Yes. I would like to tell some of our visitors that this is usually the crowd that we have. It's usually standing room. But unfortunately, that is not the case. So, without further ado, I want to move to the first item on the agenda, consideration of the resolution recognizing the retirement of Charles Y. Cooper, City Attorney. And first, we're going to read a resolution. Just don't get up. We've got a little bit of stopping for you. Resolution in honor and recognition of Charles W. Cooper for 16 years of dedicated service as the City Attorney for the City of Pleasant Ridge. Whereas, on December 14th, 1999, Charles "Chuck" Cooper was appointed as Lead City Attorney for the City of Pleasant Ridge, and it's appropriate for the community to honor this momentous occasion. And whereas, his years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development. And whereas, Mr. Cooper graduated law school in 1963 from the University of Detroit and was admitted to the Michigan State Bar that same year. During his career, he has served as a former municipal judge for the City of Pleasant Ridge, the principal prosecuting attorney and magistrate for the City of Novi, an instructor at Oakland Community College and the Oakland Community College Police Academy, as an assistant prosecuting attorney in the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office, as a mediator in the Oakland County Circuit Court, and as the Assistant City Attorney for the Cities of Hazel Park and Ferndale. Now, if we missed anything, you can fill in later. And whereas, Mr. Cooper has been a resident of Pleasant Ridge since 1968, and he and his wife Betty raise their family, Shannon, John, Ann, and William, in their home at 32 Elm Park. And whereas, during his term as City Attorney, he has consulted on major decisions for the city, including reconstruction of the community pool, expansion of the DBA district, recognition of properties in the city by the National Register of Historic Places, the Dedicated Infrastructure Improvement Village, the Library Services Village Agreement, three amendments to the city charter, cooperative purchasing, purchasing policy, elected officials' terms of office, numerous ordinance amendments. And whereas, his performance of the duties and responsibilities as a City Attorney have been characterized by excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. And whereas, he has earned the admiration and respect for those with whom he has come into contact, and the affection of his fellow public servants who are proud to call him friend. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Commission of the City of Pleasant Ridge, and on behalf of all our citizens, does hereby express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Charles Y. Cooper for his distinguished service to the community, and highly commends him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. Be it further resolved that the City Commission extends him best wishes upon his retirement as City Attorney of the beautiful community of Pleasant Ridge. And now, we will take a vote. We made that remain. Does that go to the right? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
Your Honor, I move that the resolution recognizing the retirement of Mr. Charles Y. Cooper, City Attorney, be approved, and a heartfelt thanks be extended to Mr. Cooper for his years of service for the city.
Do you have a second?
I have support.
Okay. May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisius?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Adopted my unanimous vote. Why, the City Commission! I believe that some people would like to say a few extra words first, in my mind.
Well, by the attendance tonight, I think everyone can see how beloved Charlie is. I just wrote down a few words. I wanted to make sure that, you know, Charlie knew how I felt about working with him. It was a great time. One thing I really admire about Charlie is that he has this very genuine commitment to greeting everyone with a warm smile and a very generous handshake. It really helps put you at ease, and I've always appreciated that. When I started working with him, I remember, I would address him as Mr. Cooper, and for a while, he just smiled, that big smile of his, and nodded. But soon after that, he kindly took me aside, and he insisted on just Charlie. He preferred the more familiar connection, and so did I, and I really appreciated that. Being near the Commission, I really felt, Charlie, that you went out of your way to make me feel comfortable, and for that, I'm really, really grateful. You've always struck me as one of those guys who, when you ask how you're doing, you always stick around to hear. You're genuinely interested in other people, and that's an admirable trait, and one I think we should all try and aspire to. Another thing I admired is, throughout any of the debates or discussions, Charlie always held what we had in common above our policy differences. He has that natural ability, I feel, to emphasize our common humanity above our political disagreements, and for that, I take you as a role model. I want to thank you for your years of service to PR and for the many contributions you have made to ensure that this community remains the jewel that we all cherish so much. I also want to thank your family for sharing you with the community for all these years. I know that you've sacrificed your own time, and your family has sacrificed time with you to deal with city matters, and my hope, my genuine sincere hope, is that you now have many years ahead of you to dedicate to your family. So, thank you, sir.
I just want to come over and actually, I have a couple other things for you. So here's your resolution.
Thank you.
We also have a lovely pen. And then finally, we have your official. And it comes in this wonderful little bag. Pretty classic.
Thank you. May I say a few words?
I wish you would, yes. We'd be disappointed if it didn't.
I would like to thank the Pleasant Ridge community for seeing me at Holiday Market and coming in and asking how I'm doing, or at St. Mary's. I know George Wright always comes up to me every Saturday and asks me how I'm doing. And I'm just honored that my two mentors, Ralph Castelli and, what's the name of the blonde back there? I think there's a Lauren out for her. She says no. But anyway, thank you both for coming. And thank all of you in the city for putting up with me for the 15 or 16 years, and thank you very much for the kind regards, the notes. And to Ann, I'd like to thank her for all of the cooking she's done. My Weight Watchers, significantly. So, anyway, thank all of you very, very much. It was always an honor to be associated with Pleasant Ridge. And I'd like to take a moment, my wife Betty is here, and my daughter Shannon, my daughter Ann, my son William is in the back there, and my son John Cooper. Yeah. So... They're all residents of Pleasant Ridge, except for the two outliers, Bill and John. They live in Berwick. Thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate it.
Seats in the front, if anybody wants to. Good way to start a meeting. The next item on the agenda is public discussion. Items not on the agenda, and I know that there will be some. We will allow folks to stream out this. I'll give it a second.
Good evening, Gail Girdon, representing the Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee. Boy, that's a hard act to follow, isn't it? Here, I have a few announcements that I'd like to make, and some activities that I hope everybody will get a chance to attend. We're pleased to announce that the Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee is hosting one of our very first educational classes. It's not until May, but it's May 20th, which is a Thursday, at 6:30 at Four Ridge Road. We will be hosting our speaker, Diane Gregory. She will be speaking on native Michigan plants and using natural mulches in your garden. As you know, we're trying desperately to encourage people to be more natural in your gardening techniques, so this is really a wonderful opportunity for you. Also, this Wednesday, the 23rd, is it Thursday, the 23rd, right Ted? Thursday, the 23rd, right folks? Yes, sorry. The new residents reception, the Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee will have a table there, and we'll have some environmentally friendly information for you, some brochures and flyers that we will be handing out. As most of you are aware, April is also Earth Month, and there's some wonderful activities that I'd like to just make you aware of. A couple are coming up this weekend. On Sunday, the 19th, Socra is offering an Earth Day event, an open house. There will be tours of the recycling facility, and kids will be able to do some arts and crafts using recycled products. They'll be able to go on a scavenger hunt. And this is interesting, Ted, you might be interested in this, there's going to be a recycled fashion show. Those of you who were at the last meeting and saw Ted's wonderful recycled hat will know what I'm talking about. This is a free event. Also, on Sunday, the 19th, at the Suburban, I can never say this correctly, the Novi Suburban Collection, Michigan Veg Fest will be there from 10:30 until 5:00. I don't think I told you the time of the Socra event is from 12 to 3:00. The Veg Fest is from 10:30 to 5:00 at the Novi Collection Place, and if you've never been to the Veg Fest before, it's an amazing opportunity. It used to be hosted over here at the high school, and then it got too big, they needed another venue. It's lots of fun, lots of good food, lots of information on how to eat better. If you buy tickets at the door, they're $10. You can go online and purchase them earlier, they're only $8, and children under 6 are free. This Wednesday, the 22nd, is actually Earth Day, and there are several events in the Detroit metropolitan area that are being held, far too numerous for me to talk about. But if you would like to attend any of the Earth Day celebrations, just go online and Google "Earth Day activities," and there'll be plenty there for you to attend. But just in case you'd like to celebrate on your own and do some things locally, the Environmental Committee would like to suggest that you do that, just locally. Eat and shop locally, cutting down on the carbon footprint that we have, while you're eating and shopping locally. Talk to your retailers and your food stores, and ask them to provide a little bit more of the foods that you want to eat. I've been a vegetarian for 20 years, so I've talked to lots of the grocery store owners and representatives about carrying more organic products, and they do respond. And also with your lawn care products as well. I know recently, we talked about using horticultural vinegar and corn gluten, and while those are still harder to find, if you talk to your retailers, you can find them. I did find that Home Depot carries some of those products. Not many, but some of them. One of the worldwide events that's also happening is Meatless Mondays. There's a lot of health benefits to going meatless on Monday. A lot of the schools are starting to have meatless lunches offered for the children on Mondays. And one of the things that we don't always think about, as far as Meatless Mondays is concerned, is that livestock produce between 20 and 50% of the global greenhouse gas emissions. And by going meatless on Monday, we will help to reduce those greenhouse gases, and also the supply of water that the animals drink and use is immense. Saturday, the 25th of April, the Sierra Club is hosting a rain barrel event downtown on Rivard Place. It starts at 10:30. There will be demonstrations on the use and installation of rain barrels, and if you'd like to order a rain barrel, you do need to go online, and I have information about all of these events, I have flyers that I will leave here. You do need to go online and preorder for your rain barrel. The rain barrels will cost $50. And the information on how to order the rain barrel is on the flyer. And finally, the tip of the month, I know Ted's going to give some recycling tips. The tip of the month from the Environmental Committee is please to stop using some of the chemical weed killers and to start using horticultural vinegar. It does an amazing job. I've used it for two summers now. It really kills those weeds quickly and efficiently. They don't come back for two or three months. You only have to use it once or twice a summer. And the chemical use of the more popular weed killers like Roundup and some of the ortho products is really well-known to be hazardous to both pets and humans. So we encourage you to use horticultural vinegar to kill your weeds. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions or comments.
I have a question. The event for rain barrels on April 25th?
Yes.
Where is that hosted?
It's at the Rivard Plaza downtown. It's hosted by the Sierra Club, and I have a flyer if you need it. And it's really easy, it's right on the, I think they said it was on the Riverwalk area, but if you know where Rivard is, it's just east of Woodward, and it's really easy to find. And they've hosted it there before. They had one last year as well.
Not to plug, but I believe that the Western Market is also having a post-Earth Day celebration too.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission staff. I'm Ted Zachary from 68 Devonshire, Pleasant Ridge. As a member of the Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee, I'd like to report the latest figures. For January, I rounded it up, it's 30 tons that Pleasant Ridge recycled. February, 20 tons. March, 22 tons. And I got the chart that says how much percentage that we recycled. The top one of our communities here in the Oakland County area is Huntington Woods. A lot of people know that Huntington Woods really recycles well. They're at 35%. And then you wonder where we are. Well, we're second. We have 25% for the last month. And then our neighboring communities, Royal Oak, 15%, and Ferndale, 13%. So I think that we're doing very, very well, but of course, I would like to have it like 99%. And I think, I mentioned this before, that if we did recycle 100%, the City of Pleasant Ridge would get about, I think it was about $125,000 a year more. So this is something that we should look into when we look at our budget, push recycling. And as Gail mentioned before, Earth Day is on Wednesday, April 22nd. That's a week from tomorrow. And she mentioned several other things, but I wanted to mention one extra thing, a visual aid. At that same location in Socra, or here at City Hall, well, you could purchase for half price, the Socra bin for recycling. $6 instead of 12. Not a bad, not a bad deal. So, there's one other part that I wanted to mention.
Our Monday meeting.
Oh yeah, we have a, we are going to have a meeting on Monday, the Environmental Committee. It should be a brief one, about 6:30 at Four Ridge, and we'll be preparing for the event that's coming up on the 23rd, where we have all the residents coming who are brand new or not so brand new. I'd like to mention the last part of Ted's terrific tips. Last time we met, I didn't say a terrific tip, I think. But I've got a terrific tip for you. This could save you and the people at home, if you use this per gallon, you're just going to save either $3,000 or $6,000, depending where you see it on the internet, of ink. Because ink for your printer costs about that much money if you bought it per gallon. So, for my visual aid, it's not, not only visual, but actually kinetic, is that the right word? You can actually see it. A pair of scissors, and you know how we get junk mail? I don't think I have to go any further on that. Well, it's mailed, it's mailed to you, and then what you usually do is, I usually rip this and put it in my recycling container. But instead of ripping it, I cut it, I cut the address out, like I'm doing right now. Does that sound good for the microphone there, cutting this? Boy, not only visual, kinetic, and... So I have basically a label. So I saved myself a portion of $3,000. And as I say, well, we could do this. Well, you could glue this or tape this on a letter that you're mailing out for the return address, or you could put it on your flashlight that you have in your pocket, you could tape it on with tape, or, and this actually happened, I taped it on the back of my cellphone, and it actually worked. Somebody else found it and returned it to me. So you can save a lot more money. You know how much your cellphone costs? Visual aid, is my antique with the flip?
Excuse me, Ted?
Yes?
If perhaps your wife are looking for you, could she lay the label over the light shining in the sky? Is that a signal? Will you see that she wanted you to come in?
That's a good idea. If it was strong enough, perhaps.
Just use the label.
Yeah, I like that. It's creative.
It's working.
It's very creative. So, any questions that you have? Oh, I'm wearing this for Earth Day. I didn't win any golf matches or anything. So maybe we'll see you next month, where recycling bins are $12 instead of $6, so get your bins. As I said, it's free delivery of the bin. After you pay for it. After you make arrangements for it. And watch what I'm doing right now. Yay!
Be still my heart, that was wonderful.
Thank you.
Are there any other items for public discussion?
Hello. My name is Rick Cook from 69 Amherst. Just wanted to update everyone on an incredible event that we had with the community garden last Saturday. We had an excellent turnout, we had about 10 people, achieved all of our goals for clearing last year's debris and refuse away, so we're all prepped for a nice growing season this year. Made a lot of fantastic connections between gardeners, which was great, new people coming in, existing people with a lot of experience. It's going to be fantastic. Plots are available for purchase beginning this Friday, the 17th, and the people that were out working in the garden have already guaranteed their spots for next year, and it's first come, first served from here forward. That's all I have.
I wanted to thank you officially for being a new resident and taking on this responsibility.
Oh, happy to do it.
It's wonderful.
Glad to do it.
Any other items?
You're not done, Nick.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I actually wore two hats tonight.
Oh, okay.
So, not wanting to jump the gun, but I'm also representing Commissioner Jim Nash, Oakland County's Water Resource Commissioner, so you'll notice I put on your desks this evening a copy of the 2014 Annual Report. Just wanted to make sure that you got that. And in front there on the counter, I brought other items, urban stormwater management practices. I know there's a lot of interest in Pleasant Ridge and neighboring communities about green infrastructure, and as we have another summer in storms coming. And then I also brought a stack of the calendars. So, even though I'll be up in a minute, I'm Youth Assistance, I did want to give you greetings from Jim Nash and all the good folks in Oakland County.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the handouts that Craig mentioned are in the main office.
Yes, Mr. Craig.
Okay. So let's move on to the next item, and it's a presentation by Mr. Craig Covey, Chairperson of Ferndale Youth Assistance.
Timing excellent. Thank you again. Thanks to the Commission and to the staff, always good to see you as well. I am Craig Covey, from your neighboring sister city to the south, but I'm representing Ferndale Youth Assistance, which is the youth assistance program that covers all of us in the Ferndale School District. As you may know, it is a partnership. It's a nonprofit organization based at the school, the high school and the middle school, but it's a partnership of the school district, the 43rd District Court, the police departments in our cities, and also the city governments of Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, Oak Park, and Royal Oak Township. Each year, you make a generous donation to us, we appreciate that, and we receive funds and also a lot of volunteer effort from all of those partners. We do a lot of work with at-risk youth in the past year. As a matter of fact, we have a full-time social worker based at the school. She worked with 181 students, clients, this past year. We send kids to camp, and sometimes Ferndale District sends actually the most kids to summer camp than any district in the county, 56 this past summer. A lot of the kids are disadvantaged income-wise, so we have different programs that enable them to do other programs or other skill building, scholarships, also emergency needs. But I did want to just share a little bit about the Youth Assistance, and also to thank you for your support each year. A couple of examples, we have semi-annual free legal clinic that's coming up on Tuesday, April the 28th. I'll leave this with the city clerk. This will also be online. This is very helpful, because a lot of folks sometimes need a lawyer, but they're just so expensive, no offense to the lawyers. So it's very helpful for families and low-income folks to get some quick legal advice. Also, Mayor, you come to this each year. Our annual student youth recognition night is coming up again. It's Wednesday, April the 29th. All of the Commission members are invited. Pretty neat program.
Inspiring.
We appreciate you coming, city council members, judges, police chiefs, your police chief always attends as well. So that's coming up at Coolidge Intermediate School, and we'll have promotion of that. But basically, I just wanted to thank you for your support of Youth Assistance, see if you had any questions, and just sort of wish you a happy Earth Day as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Well, then we'll just move on to consideration of the 2014-15 Ferndale Youth Assistance funding request. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that the request by Ferndale Youth Assistance, FYA, for the annual contribution of $1,000 to its organization be approved as recommended.
Do you have a second? I second. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisius?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion is approved. Thanks so much, Craig. I'm sorry it couldn't be more, but we'll keep working on it. Next item on the agenda is governmental reports. Thank you, Charlie, again. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you.
I see we have lots of government representatives, so who gets to go first?
You tell me.
Come on, buddy.
Let's hear it from Lansing.
Yeah. Let's hear it from Lansing.
Yeah, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Robert Wittenberg, State Representative here for Pleasant Ridge, as well as neighboring communities, Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, Ferndale, Hazel Park, Royal Oak Township, Huntington Woods. There's seven, I think I got all of them. So, wanted to just come and check in with everyone, and also, and wishes for Charlie Cooper. Actually, Charlie and my uncle have been friends for many, many, many years, so I've known Charlie since I was young. But just want to give a brief update of what's going on in Lansing, and also let you know about some events that are upcoming, one specifically here in Pleasant Ridge. So, March was Reading Month, and I'm proud to say we got out, I personally got out and read to every one of the school districts in the 27th District, so Ferndale School District, Oak Park School District, Berkeley, Hazel Park, read to 755 students, which was wonderful, from preschool through third grade, and the questions were always great. They kept me on my toes with all the questions they were asking, but it was just a lot of fun to read to all the different classes. I don't want to bore you with all the different things that are going on. One of the main bills that I was fighting against, again, I'm obviously a Democrat and progressive, as this district mostly is... I don't want to bore you with all the different things that are going on. One of the main bills that I was fighting against, again, I'm obviously a Democrat and progressive as this district mostly is, which I'm proud to say, fighting against the, there were these adoption bills that were introduced in the House. And in essence, they would give faith-based adoption agencies the right to discriminate and take government funding at the same time. So they're getting money from the state government and gives them the option to pick and choose who they work with, kind of the Religious Freedom Restoration Act, it's something specific for the adoption agencies. So something that I fought against as much as possible. I had an op-ed that was in the Detroit Free Press, spoke to it on the floor, actually got one Republican to change their vote, which I was proud to say, at least one. And, you know, every time, I'll keep trying to get more and more to change their vote on some of these issues. So that was something that we were dealing with there in Lansing. Some other things that I'm introducing, one just briefly, a security guard package of bills that I'm working in a bipartisan manner here in Michigan, one of only seven states where private security guards, security guards don't have to have any kind of formal training, certification, anything like that, if you're with a private company. And these are people who have some kind of authority and perceive power. So, you know, we feel like they should have some kind of training. And that's something that Republicans agree with us on as well. So working with, you know, on a bipartisan manner to get that passed. It passed in the Senate, and then it's going to come back now to the House. So hopefully we can get that passed as well. So those are just a couple of things. Every month, we've been holding coffee hours in, throughout, again, there's seven communities in the city. So I apologize for not getting here sooner to Pleasant Ridge, but we have our coffee hour coming up. But people are welcome to come wherever the coffee hours are, and we post them here. We drop off some flyers so people can see. Also, I have an email list, an e-blast that we send out. So I'll give that in one second. But the coffee hour here in Pleasant Ridge is coming up on Thursday, May 7th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center at Four Ridge. So 7:00 PM, I encourage anyone and everyone that wants to come out, questions, suggestions, anything like that. So the best way to reach me, don't feel obligated to come out, you can email me, you can call me. I always want to be available to help in any way that's needed. Phone number's 517-373-0478. Email is robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. And then Wittenberg, W-I-T-T-E-N-B-E-R-G. Most people end up spelling that with an H or V-U-R-G, so just to clarify. And on my website, wittenberg.housedemms.com. If you go there and sign up for the e-blast, then I'll give you updates of what's going on in Lansing. I will send you when there's events in the community, coffee hours, things like that. Just kind of keep you apprised of what's going on. I will never send too many, I won't try to spam anyone, I won't send too much, just when there are updates that I want people to be aware of. So that's kind of just a little bit. I appreciate you letting me come by and say hello. I have been in touch with a lot of you and staying up to date on what's going on here. There's also a ballot measure, I'm sure everyone's familiar, I hope so, May 5th, which is really important. And we're encouraging everyone to get out there and vote, please. We want, you know, this is going to be a low turnout when it's not during the November election, the turnout's really low. But I'm proud to say that Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, you know, the communities in this area, get out and vote. I am proud to say that. But we want to continue that. We want, you know, people know that these areas are engaged, and that's why I'm so proud to represent these communities that are so engaged in the process. So don't let me down. Make sure you all get out to vote, make me look good, you know, with my colleagues as well. So I can say, you know, we had a high percentage of voters turn out even in a May election. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
I was just going to ask about.
Sure.
I mean, you know, we did pass a resolution to support it.
Yep.
And I know the school board has been very supportive of it.
Yep, so I personally support it as well. I support it as well. I will, maybe if you'll indulge me, I can go for like one minute and just go through. So, few things. The sales tax is a regressive tax, and I completely understand that, and that's my hesitation. But all the things that are built in are all things that I truly believe in and things I want to see funded. Money for our public schools, obviously money to fix our roads, money for the earned income tax credit, which helps out with our working class, you know, working poor families. It's very important. Public transportation, which, you know, obviously in community, especially here in Pleasant Ridge, public transportation is essential and something that we need to keep building and growing. We're going to warranty the roads. We're going to make sure that the roads, the contractors that are fixing the roads, that if something happens, they're going to come back and have to fix the roads. Money's for our local communities, money that goes, you know, back to our local municipalities. And a lot, the, so one other thing, sorry, because there are a lot of moving parts, and I understand that's why there's some confusion. But again, a lot of, everything's good in my mind, other than the sales tax, but there's, you know, that kind of makes up for everything. That money through, and I know school board members can talk about this as well, as of right now, the way it's set up, higher education can actually take money from the school aid fund. This will make it so that that money goes only through for K-12 education and some tech schools, which is great. I mean, that's, we want that money to stay there. So all these things are just great reasons why I support this. For those, I understand, again, with this, with the regressive tax, Gilda Jacobs, who was our state senator, state representative, just a fierce champion of these progressive causes and was a wonderful representative for this community, works with the Michigan League for Public Policy right now, and they ran the numbers. And for some of our lower-income families with the restoration of the earned income tax credit, they're actually going to benefit from this, based on the money they're going to get back versus how much they will spend at the pumps. So a lot of great things. And then again, with sales tax, it doesn't go, actually, I didn't say this, but sales tax doesn't affect your groceries, doesn't affect your prescription drugs, doesn't affect your rent or mortgage. So for all those reasons, and then kind of the cherry on top in my mind is that if not this, then what? And you look at the legislature, the way it's made up right now, the alternative that has been presented, there's really no viable alternative, but the alternative that was presented and seems like there might be some support on the other side is to cut funding to our schools, to cut funding to our local municipalities, our Department of Community Health budget. There are things that fundamentally I believe in, and I think these are the, you know, this is where our money should be going, and that's where they want to cut the money from. So if this doesn't go through, again, it could be, it could be trouble, unfortunately. So for all those reasons, I'm in favor of it. And then for that one reason, that's kind of, again, the cherry on top. It's like, there's a lot of great things built in, and then the alternative is something that scares me as well. So yes, that's my stance, I support the proposal. I don't know if I'm missing anything, I try to get through it as briefly as I can. We also have a community forum for those of you watching at home and anyone else that wants to come out, actually, Oak Park, April 21st. Let me just confirm where. April 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Oak Park Community Center. And we're actually going to have a representative from MDOT there to speak on the issue as well. So theirs is nonpartisan, you know, they won't, they won't give you kind of, I'm a little more, I'll be a little more partisan about it and supportive of it, they will just give you the straight facts of what happens if it passes, if it doesn't pass. So encourage people to come out to that as well, if they want to get more information. And again, reach out to me, email me, call me, whatever I can do to help. But even if you are a no vote, a yes vote, whatever it is, vote. Please vote. Please vote. So, any other questions?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you, Robert, for coming out tonight. And thank you for, you know, your aggressive work against the adoption bills, and I share your sentiments on that. And I appreciate your efforts in that regard.
Thank you.
On proposal one, as the mayor said, this body supported a resolution to support, and I personally do support the proposal, and we'll be voting for it. In conversation with a lot of my friends, family, residents, there's a lot of hesitancy, and it's understandable. And a lot of my conversations focus on the sentiments that you've already shared about, you know, a lot of good things outweighing the bad things.
Yeah.
One reoccurring sentiment that I get from residents and people from throughout, not only this community, but, you know, at workplace and family, they talk about, well, is the money really going to go for what they say it's going to go? And we're not going to fall for this again. And, you know, they bring up some instance where 20 years ago, they felt swindled by the legislature.
Yeah.
And I would just like, appreciate you up there in the trenches there to really speak to that worry that many of our residents have, that yes, we may support this, it may pass, but then down the road, we're just going to end up at the same problem.
And I understand that frustration, but, you know, this measure itself builds in those safeguards. I mean, you're changing the Constitution, and there's not much else we can do beyond that. That to me, again, not to get completely political, but that to me speaks more about term limits, because you have people who will get in there, you know, again, the most I can possibly serve, or any representative can serve, is three two-year terms, so six years. So when you have that kind of changeover, you might have people who come in that are new and that are going to say, well, this has nothing to do with me, I wasn't here for this. So, you know, let's figure out how we're going to, we're going to get this funding if there are problems in the future. So this guarantees it as best you can. There's really nothing else we can do, you know, above and beyond this, because I can't tell you the future. I know that if I'm, you know, lucky enough to be here for six years, I will fight, you know, for you and for everyone else. I promise you that. So, but I completely understand that hesitation. But again, the alternatives are even worse. So, yeah, there, it's, I would say, I've got a lot of mixed reviews on this, but I think a lot of it is people who just don't know the whole package of what's going to happen if it, you know, these are all tie-bart, I mean, everything, if it's voted down, then none of this happens. The earned income tax credit will, more than likely in this, you know, this environment will never come up again. Funding for our public schools, you know, we've seen that there have been cuts made year after year after year. I mean, this guarantees the money will go there. Revenue sharing, I mean, you guys have seen this here, our local communities have suffered over the last, I think it's $6 billion or probably more than that, over the last 10, 11 years, has been diverted away from our local governments. So these are ways to guarantee money going in the right direction. So, yeah, I mean, I really, I wish I could guarantee you long-term, but this is the best guarantee you're going to get.
Well, one thing I was comforted by was the understanding that this was bipartisan in the end of The Lame Duck.
Yes.
So to speak. And so that at least comforts me, knowing that both sides had a say in developing this, whereas I feel if this fails to pass, then we're really going to look at a one-sided solution.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right on that. And to give a little backstory, there was a proposal that was supported by the Senate Democrats, the Senate Republicans, the governor, the House Democrats. Everyone was on, you know, they were supportive of the proposal that would have addressed it in the legislature, they wouldn't have pushed it back to the voters. It was a solution. And there was, the Speaker of the House, Jace Bolger, had a different plan and stuck to his guns on that. And when they obviously went in the room together, they, this is what they came out with. But again, there were some real wins, obviously as partisan and as a Democrat, there were some real wins on the values, you know, the things that I really value as a Democrat, again, money, earned income tax credit for our schools, our local communities, a lot of these things. So yes, I would say that this was a bipartisan effort, this proposal. So, and again, if it doesn't go through, the alternative is it might not be a bipartisan effort, it might be, you know, the majority party who has control of every branch of government here in the state of Michigan could kind of decide what they want to do. So I think this is something where it's in our hands, we can actually make a decision and, you know, dictate what's going to happen in the future versus passing it back and then seeing what's going to happen, if anything. I mean, there also could be nothing, and then the roads keep deteriorating. I mean, we're last in the country for infrastructure investment, per capita, we are last in the country on how much we spend per capita on our infrastructure.
Yet highest for repairs and things like that.
That's right. That's right. So over 300, I don't remember the exact number, 300, is it 500 and something now? Okay, it's gone up.
Per capita.
So, yeah, so if anyone, if you paid less than $500, then your neighbor, your friend's subsidizing you. So, yeah, I mean, it's bad, the roads are, you know, it's become, and it is a public safety issue as well.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah. So again, anyone, reach out to me, this issue, any other issue, anything we can do to help, I'm always happy to help and serve the residents of Pleasant Ridge and all the seven communities that I'm lucky enough to represent.
Well, I would definitely encourage our residents to take advantage of your coffee on the 7th, because I think that's a really important avenue for residents to really communicate their concerns and questions directly to Lansing, where, you know, we know a lot of the decisions that affect us here at the municipal level get decided there. So I definitely encourage all our residents, you know, to come out on the 7th and join you for that discussion.
Thank you.
I appreciate you making the time to do that.
Thank you.
Two days after the election.
Yeah, it'll be, it will be interesting.
Interesting time.
It will be interesting. So, but, you know, I'm there with, serving for the good, for the bad, and everything in between. You know, again, I want to, I want to help and do whatever I can to make this the best place in the state to live, and make the state a great place to live.
Yeah.
So that's for sure. Yeah, making us competitive.
Yeah.
So.
What a concept. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Now we go to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Okay, some of you don't know me, I'm Gary McGilbert, County Commissioner, from now Pleasant Ridge, the last couple of years. Got three items I wanted to bring up. The first one is, you'll be happy to know that we lowered your taxes on the county level just a little bit. It would have been on average of $8 to $10 per year that you're going to get back on the average home, maybe a little bit higher in Pleasant Ridge. But I, just so you know and are aware, I voted against it. The reason I voted against it is I would rather have seen the money go into roads, since we're not sure what's going to happen come this election. And my biggest concern is, is that the money, the Act 51 money that everyone gets for roads, cities get a real small amount compared to the county road commission. And there's a lot of communities out here that just can't afford to do any road projects because they don't have the money to do it, even with Act 51 money. So that's why I voted against it, hopefully to put it, get the money back to the communities for roads. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I sit on the Public Services Committee, and part of the Public Services Committee, we formed a gun safety study group. And we've met over the last two years with school superintendents talking about school safety. We've talked to police chiefs, state police, FBI regarding all different aspects of gun safety and what we can do to improve it. So as a small committee, we're doing our own small little part, and that is passing out free gun locks. That'll be taking place the first week of June, and the date isn't yet determined. So once I get that, I will make sure I let you know. We will be having a press release at that point and having all the different police departments come out to the county, sheriff's office will be involved. And we're giving away, I think each city can get up to 100 gun locks to pass out to their residents. The whole idea is gun safety and to get people to lock their guns up. If you don't have a gun safe, find a way to lock your guns down so that, we all know that the biggest number of crimes that are committed are done with stolen guns. That being the case, it's important that we lock the guns down so that they can't be taken when someone breaks into your house. So the gun locks will help to do a little bit of that, so. And last, I wanted to mention, on April 25th, I know you're all busy with a bunch of different things that day, but I'll be hosting the sixth annual cleanup for Red Oaks Nature Center. We've had a good turnout the last few years. Last year, we had almost 200 people that came out to help clean up the nature center and the woods all the way around it. And we do anything from raking leaves around all the fence lines around the park to picking up wood debris around. The county went through and cut a bunch of trees into sections, and we had a bunch of people that came and walked into the woods, carried these big logs out, and then we... and, and then we hauled them all off. So it includes lunch, hot dog lunch, and some goodies. I think my wife is making cookies as usual. So, if anybody, if any of you can make it, come on out, it's a good time. You don't have to be there the whole time, but it runs from nine till two. So if, if you can come out for a short time, come on out and give us a hand, and we would appreciate it. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Yes, Gary, this is a family event then?
Yes, by all means. We have a men's club in Madison Heights that's very involved. And it's amazing, the little guys out there carry those logs, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say I was glad you voted no, because it did make.
Pardon?
I was glad you voted no on the first, on the money giving back to the community, because the dollars were so small to the individuals compared to what it could have done if you.
It means nothing, yeah. You go out and waste it on junk food, so.
And you also brought up something that I was gonna ask Robert, but this whole idea about concealed weapons versus open carry versus going in schools and whether you can take them in the libraries and yes, as long as you conceal them, it's okay. I mean, and I know the Senate and the House are coming up with different bills and.
Yeah, there's pending legislation.
Pending right now, yeah. It hasn't come to the House, it's only in the Senate.
Yeah, so, guns.
Very good, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Karen Toomey from Ferndale Public Schools. I just wanted to bring some good news. First and foremost, I have to brag as a parent of a robotics team child. You may or may not have heard that our IMPI Robotics team is now going on to Nationals after having placed in the top twenty-five for the state. So that was a real thrill and pride point. It was especially fun to see the team at the Governor's Summit and getting the attention of the whole state for just their incredible accomplishments. So they are now currently trying to raise money, and I know that we have a generous community that has members on the team. So if anybody is interested in giving to their Indiegogo account, you can find them on Facebook at IMPI Robotics, that's I-M-P-I. And I'm sure that they would appreciate some sponsorship, because it takes about twenty thousand dollars to go down there to St. Louis. So we're looking forward to going there in just a couple of weeks. Congratulations, of course, are also due to our Ferndale Independent Percussion Team. They finished second in the world championship. And so they are a local percussion group that is comprised of students from Ferndale High School as well as other surrounding communities such as Berkeley. And they are under the direction of our very own alumni, Danny Chun, and they are just really a pride of our community right now. And so we are just so pleased to see so many of our teams and kids going forward to such high levels in state and beyond. Yeah, so that's been really great. We have some upcoming events. One of my favorite events of the year is, of course, the Roosevelt Coolidge Talent Show, which is going to be this Saturday at the high school. I think it's a very steep admission rate of something like five dollars, and that will send kids to sixth grade camp. So it's really worth that event. Also, actually, before that, I think just this Thursday on the sixteenth, the Ferndale Rotary Club Spaghetti Dinner has a fundraiser, and that is just ten dollars. So that is going to be six PM, ten dollars at Blooms. And on the twenty-first, we're going to be hosting a informational night on the Cambridge Honors Program at Ferndale Middle School. You may have heard about this. This is something that I'm really proud of. Many districts in the neighborhood have been doing the International Baccalaureate Program. You've probably heard about that. This is of the same caliber. It's an internationally normalized program, has same levels of rigor, same international recognition, and also has a lot of those great values of different learning styles, and the philosophies are just really fantastic. And I'm really proud that Ferndale is going to be the only community welcoming this program into our schools. So when you're out there on the streets talking to people from other communities, this is going to really be a unique talking point that we can share with others. And having been an educator in international communities for a while now, I can say that I definitely bump into other people that talk about the Cambridge Program, and it has a really fantastic reputation. And I think people have almost been wondering why it is that Michiganders haven't been bringing it into our state. So go Ferndale, we're the first. So another great. On the twenty-fifth, the Ferndale School Spring Checkup Family Health Fair will be happening from three to, from eleven until three at the high school. This is an event which will be open to the general public, and it will host a variety of local specialists conducting free health screenings, as well as personal trainers, yoga instructors, I'm sure your wife would be interested, nutritionists and more. So local insurance companies will answer questions for attendees to learn more about the affordable healthcare and review their healthcare options. This is, I know, something that many people are still trying to navigate. So hopefully that will be a wonderful event for everybody. Any questions for me this evening?
Yes, Karen, just a clarification on IMPI Robotics. So I went and took a look at the Indiegogo website, just to see how easy it was to search for them and their page. So you can go to indiegogo.com and just search for I-M-P-I. It brings up their page, and it shows that they've already met their goal. Their goal was two thousand dollars, because that was before they knew they were getting to Nationals.
We will fix that.
And they're above their goal now. They're at twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred. So we need to make sure that it gets fixed to say that the new goal is twenty thousand because of their great achievement. But just so everyone knows, got any free money in your pockets? Go ahead, go to indiegogo.com and throw it over there. Help them out.
Do you see how it really does take a village to look after our kids? Thank you for looking after our children. I appreciate that very personally. Thank you.
Now, let's see, fire or police?
Yes, in your.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, not a whole lot going on. We are rebranding the fire department. Uniform started with our new patch, and we took that emblem to letterhead, and it's going on trucks. And we are putting, for safety reasons, a lot more reflective striping, but all standardizing the whole fleet. So you'll see, we light up more at night when your headlights hit us. And putting the federal chevrons on the back, which is for being out on six ninety-six, Woodward and such, because a lot of police officers, EMS workers and firefighters are hit working the roadways. So that's what we're in progress of doing now. So you'll see some changes in the truck. Nothing else has changed. We did bring back one of our laid-off members as we had a retirement. Lieutenant Mike Casey retired, so we replaced him with Jake Latson, who'd been laid off and working over in Hazel Park for them during his sabbatical. So I have another retirement coming up in June, so we'll be bringing back our last laid-off guy, back in the, replacing him in June. And that'll be a nice thing, having them all back. So that's pretty much what's going on with the fire department.
And how does your daughter feel about this design? Does she like it?
My granddaughter told me that she's invited by you to come to any commission meetings, even without me.
Yes.
And so she's very, she's a very active government. My wife says she's the new politician, and she's working on it.
I can tell, I can tell.
Oh, we hosted the Daisy Troop. The local Daisy Troop came in. It was the largest tour I've ever had in the fire department. There were over thirty kids and probably close to equal in adults. So we probably had fifty-six people. But it worked out really well. It worked out very.
My son, who's an honorary daisy for that, very much. So thank you for.
Yep, it worked out really well. Take care.
Thank you.
You, Mayor, commissioners, fellow city staff, I won't let the fire department steal all the thunder on their new graphics, so I'll skip down to our new police car, obviously. As you know, we are in dire need of updating and replacing police cars here. Through your generosity, the citizens' generosity, we were able to purchase that car in January. Finally, if you notice, you've seen it on the road. One has new graphics, as you can tell. It's the same, I used to call our own car the stealth bomber look. It ran its course. It was innovative in its day, and it helped for us to sneak up on people. But I think that people want to know and see their police when you drive down the road. So we came up with a new design, and I hope everybody likes it. I've heard nothing but good comments about it. Plus, no one around here has anything like that, so it's unique. We get to stand out. So that's it. Plus, with that car, we went with a most beef up and want to go fast and have the V8s and stuff. We were, we went with the V6. We looked at cost and stuff. That's gonna save fuel in the long run. We also added a new, it's not a new system, but it's new to Pleasant Ridge, is a battery backup system. It actually has a second battery in it. If you noticed, and residents have noticed and have asked questions all in the past, why is a police car running in the parking lot all the time? You know, if the officer's in here with an arrest or doing reports, whatever, why is it running? Well, the computer systems would always shut down, so you'd have to re-log back on, and you couldn't get your info. Everything's computerized now, so you couldn't get the intelligence that you needed to go to your next call without rebooting the computer, re-logging on. Everything has a password. Everything changes every ninety days on the password for security reasons. So it was quite the event. That's why the police cars would stay running. Now with this new, again, not new system, but new to us, is we'll save fuel, wear and tear on the car, and it won't be running in the parking lot. So questions with that. So just something new with the, with the cars. I'd like to thank the same company, Magic Graphics, that did Ferndale's cars and fire vehicles. I saw one of their, the fire inspector, fire marshal's car was there when we picked up ours. They did a fantastic job. We had, they did help us with the design, and we had our car there and back in under three hours for a really good price. That was very competitive and fair. So I would make a shout out to Magic Graphics. To crime, if we're comparing crime from, you get questions all the time from everybody in the city, from March of fourteen to fifteen, crime overall is down twenty-one percent. Again, small community, if we get one event that obviously goes up a hundred percent that we didn't have the year before. So being so small, our numbers have a tendency to get skewed. But overall, from last year to this year, down twenty-one percent. Going into that, over the weekend, Oak Park and Berkeley were hit very hard with larceny from vehicles. Us in Huntington Woods were not, as did the four surrounding, pretty much. Hopefully a message is getting out. Lock your doors, lock your windows, set your alarm if you have to. With the warmer weather coming, we leave our windows open and things like that. So we gotta be diligent in doing that. So just to take the threat away. The other day, I was sitting in my living room, and there's a group of kids walking down the road, and I watched them in every corridor, broad daylight, trying to car door. So I waited till they got to one of mine and hit the panic alarm, and they ran down the street. But they were younger, so that doesn't always work. So remember to lock your doors and windows at all times. We're still getting reports. In fact, another resident was in today, went to file his taxes with his accountant and learned that his identity had been stolen, and his taxes were filed with IRS. It's at least the fifth or sixth resident that we're aware of so far this year. So again, like we advise everybody, again, it might be a cost that in today's day and age, we need to incur with the life lock or things like that to protect your identity, shred your documents. But now, like with anything, just you wrong-click something on your email that looks legitimate, and now you've been hacked. So be wary of things like that. I think unless you have any questions or whatever, that's all I can mention. Roosevelt School had their redo the Children Day a couple of weeks ago. I was able, for the first time, of not being on Midnight, since I was a rep in the city, to go to that. I found that it was harder keeping the attention of third graders than it is than I imagined, since the last time I had done it was years ago in Garden City, but I was in a McGruff suit too. So it was easier to keep their attention dressed as a dog. Maybe we'll have to get one of those here, and we can drive around everybody in McGruff suits in the cars, and we won't have issues. So.
Let's get a fundraising for that one.
Mr. Mayor, something quick to add. This is related, because we're talking about crime. I attended a seminar on my work in the last couple of weeks, and I got an interesting statistic. I wanted to see if maybe you've heard anything like this. So it's basically that over seventy-five percent of convicted burglars believe that other burglars are using social media to identify their targets. So basically, they could just camp out and see what you're posting on your page, and oh, you're on vacation, great. There's pictures. Oh, they're not coming back for two weeks, great. Okay, where do they live? Let me just look there. Okay, who are their friends? Okay, great. Got it. So I thought it was pretty interesting.
Absolutely. I mean, they're not, I mean, we used to say that the criminals were stupid, and that's why we look so good. That's not the case anymore. They're making it more difficult on us. And traditionally, law enforcement is well behind in keeping up with technology or trends. We're, because of cost or whatever, or being, a lot of us are dinosaurs, so we're antiquated. You know, I just learned how to program my VCR, so. Some, what's a VCR?
It does.
But that trend, we have, we have to do a better job of keeping up with. And we're all, we all wanna brag, oh, yeah, you know, I went at the store shopping or doing whatever. I mean, I, you know, I hope that we're not all those Facebook posters that put everything we do constantly on there, but that's how they notice. Our packages on your, you heard me mention before, get it delivered to the back door of neighbors or something if you're not gonna be home. Mail stacking up, things like that. So yes, they are aware. We try to stay on it. I think we do a really good job here, as evidenced by crime stats, and we didn't get hit like other communities do. So probably because of the better visible police cars. We take that as a credit. So, but yes, that's a good point. And we gotta be aware on social media not to post everything we do or where we're going. And we do do vacation checks. We had a lot of them over the Easter break, a lot more than usual. I wish, I told people they could take me with them, but nobody took my offer. And, but we do do that. Remind everybody, you can log on, on the city webpage and put in, or you can come in, and we'll do it, or we'll do it over the phone for you. Any other questions? Nope, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Next item on the agenda is city commissioners on reports. Commissioner Kuziak, Recreation Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at our meeting in March, we went over some dates for the upcoming recreation calendar. The first one that I'd like to let people aware of is coming up Saturday, May twenty-third. We did this for the last couple of years, and last year we had the kids prepare their bikes to participate in our Memorial Day Parade. So we're gonna do that again on Saturday, May twenty-third, eleven AM, for a couple hours. We'll be out in the community center parking lot. And the kids will have an opportunity to attach streamers, ribbons, just decorate their bikes, and then come back Monday morning for the Memorial Day Parade and participate along with everyone else in the parade. We had a good turnout last year, and we're hoping for a similar turnout this year. We also reviewed the pancake brunch. I want to thank everyone at this table and all the residents who came out for that. That's always a great, great event. We had a little snafu with pancake production. I want to personally apologize for that and dedicate, the whole, entire recreation group is dedicated to making the improvements necessary to ensure that every pancake gets delivered on time next year without wait. So, but the Easter Bunny was there, and the kids all enjoyed hunting for eggs. And, and once again, it was a great event. One note that I'm a little disheartened by, but I wanted to pass along to the rest of the community, is the Recreation Commission said farewell to Assistant Recreation Director Bridget Brown. She has moved on to Huntington Woods for, in advance to her career. And, but obviously, it's disappointing that she leaves our family here in Pleasant Ridge, her time spent here. She, I know she made many deep connections with the, with the people and the families here in Pleasant Ridge and the Recreation Commission. And I know this commission as well is sad to see her go, but wishes her all the best. And that's all I have. I don't know if Scott wanted to touch on another development we have going right now as far as the Gainesboro Shelter.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commission. It's been a long time coming, but we are, we're finally ready to open the shelter for car access. And it's been, the weather's been so nice. And I was there on Saturday, and I ran to the mayor there on Friday, just trying to get everything squared away and make sure that the pass system is operating. So I'm going to give the commission their cards tonight, so they will be the first ones to have, have their access. So.
Yes.
And we have one for Brett, he's not here, and one for Jim. So we will, we will have those available for people to come in on Thursday to fill out, they have some paperwork that they have to fill
Thursday to fill out, they have some paperwork that they have to fill out, and we can issue you your card. The first card for your household will be free. There's one, one card per household, and if you happen to lose that, you'll, there's, there will be a charge, because the cards are actually a pretty sophisticated piece of technology, and they do have a higher price, a higher price tag than usual. So we are working on another type of card that would be like a little key fob that will, that will work. I'm just trying to get that technology to work with the door. So if we, if I am able to get that to work, hopefully within the next couple of days, you'll have the option of either the card or the key fob. So just be aware that there's surveillance in the, in the building, there are signs, so we know that, you know, when people come in and out, and we're able to, to watch on the common areas, not in the restrooms, of course, and hours are, will be from nine a.m. to nine p.m. Your card will work, and that'll be from April first to October thirty-first, and from November first to March thirty-first, it'll be nine a.m. to seven p.m. So there was a lot of people out in the park on Friday and Saturday, both, that was out there for the garden, so I know people are excited to, to get going with that, and so are we, so.
Cool.
Any other questions?
So should people make sure not to punch a hole or anything like that?
So the cards are, they are able to punch a hole in them, and if you look very closely at the card, there's, there's three little dots on like the top and on the, on one side. Very hard to see. The side where it has the little numbers, that's a, that's a safe area to punch.
Okay.
So.
Great.
What we'll do is, I have to, they have a special punch for it that is a long one like that, and we can, we're gonna order one of those. So if somebody wants a punch, we're able, we'll be able to punch it for you.
Cool.
At the community center. So the last, the last thing that's pretty important is, so if you come at nine o'clock in the morning on Thursday and get your card, and then go run right over to the shelter and go to scan it, it's not going to work. We have to, we have to input all the information into the computer, and then it needs to be uploaded into the lock. So once a day, if we get a lot, we'll, we'll do that once a day in the beginning as soon as we can, but once we start, once they start slowing up, probably at the end of the day, we'll upload it to the lock. So give it, you know, maybe eight hours before your card is possibly active.
Can I run over tomorrow?
Yours, yours will work. Your guys are already uploaded into the system, so you'll be able to at nine a.m.
You stand there and let people in.
There you go.
I just wanted to say, I like the fact that on the top of the card in blue, it says, "Shelter renovations provided by a generous grant from the Pleasant Ridge Foundation."
Yay!
Very nice.
So we, we definitely want to give props to the foundation. We appreciate everything that they've given to us for that, and you'll see the building is, it's, you know, a simple little building, but it looks great. The mayor is in on Friday, and you know, make sure you check out the LED lights that are in the ceiling, and it's just, it looks nice and it's ready to be used.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Question for Scott. Scott, can residents go only to City Hall to get the card, or can they go to the Fort Ridge?
Only, only to the community center.
Only to the?
Yeah, yeah. That's where we have the software to be able to put it in. So people, there's a form that you have to fill out and sign, you know, saying that you're taking responsibility for the card and that you're, know that you're, there's surveillance in the building, and then we'll issue you the card, so.
Does it sign up for it? Does it ask for email address or?
Yep, it'll ask for your, your name, a phone number, the list of all the people in a household that could be using the card, and an email address.
Just wonder if at that time, we can make, make it available to the resident to sign up for the e-blast list or the text list that we have for the city.
Yep. Anytime we ask for somebody's email address, actually, two people came in today to, to sign up for Wellness Center cards, and when we ask for the email address, we ask permission to add you to the, to the e-blast. So that is something, once they sign that, they're giving us the right to be able to do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Commissioner Foreman, Committee Liaison.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three items tonight. First, I'll touch on a little bit of a summary of the school restructuring decision that has occurred at the last school board meeting. This was a few weeks ago. Basically, the decision was to go ahead with a model that would be a marriage at the open classroom model, which exists today, and the Cambridge International Curriculum, which Karen Toomey discussed a little bit. The planned outcome of this will be the preservation of strong parent volunteerism, student-directed learning, project-based education, outdoor education, focused learning, and student peer mentoring. This new model will also allow for the return of Spanish language K through five, more opportunities for advanced coursework, individual focus studies, service learning, individual computers or tablets available to students that are in grades three through five, and systematic interventions to help all students when they struggle. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the elementary schools will be broken up into an upper and a lower elementary. The lower building will be Roosevelt, that'll have grades K through two. JFK will be three through five. Sixth grade will be moved to the middle school. These changes will take effect in sixteen, seventeen school year, so not this coming school year. This will give about a year to work out all the details. Next item ties into that. These details will be worked out in partnership with a transition committee, which will be composed of members of the community, parents, or just at-large community residents who, who don't necessarily have children in the schools at this time. The first meeting of that transition committee is actually tomorrow night, seven p.m. at the Ferndale High School Media Center. Again, anyone is welcome to join if you're a member of the community and participate. If anyone would like to be part of this group, you can feel free to attend the kickoff tomorrow night, or you can email, and I'll read the address, it's Kimberly.Sheppard, S-H-E-P-H-E-R-D, at FerndaleSchools.org. She's the superintendent's assistant. Finally, the last one I'll mention, and I won't mention this one again for a while, I've talked about it several times already, is the FEF Dinner. This has already happened. This was the fundraising dinner that occurred a few weeks back. I'd like to thank the entire city commission, as well as city manager, for coming to support this event. The attendance was up this year, and it raised a total of about nineteen thousand dollars for classroom mini-grants. And this was a few thousand dollars more than last year. This was another successful fundraiser, and the money will go directly to our teachers and our classrooms. So it's extremely beneficial, and it goes to very good use. So thank you all for, for supporting it. Thank you to the community that supported it. That's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Perry, Planning and DDA, and maybe Historical Commission, I don't know.
Oh, yeah. I don't have those. We'll go to Amy. The Planning Commission and DDA met on March twenty-third. The DDA discussed the 2015 alley improvement, alley improvement project. They discussed budgeting solutions for the significant rise in construction costs that had been quoted over and above what they had, what was anticipated. We'll be discussing that later in tonight's meeting, too. They also are beginning their budget discussions for the fifteen, sixteen budget year. This Wednesday, the DDA is holding a meeting for the businesses in the Pleasant Ridge Business District. This is a really exciting, you know, gathering that they're gonna have. You know, having two business owners on the DDA now has opened up some good communication paths with some of the other business owners. So you're starting to see just reach out to the different community, to the different businesses in the community. And this gathering is going to start some conversations among the businesses, as well as the businesses with the administration. You know, means like this can work really well as networking opportunities, but also just helping, you know, helping the businesses be part of the community, you know, their own business community, as well as part of the neighborhood. The DDA is also discussing their summer event, and this will be like intermixing the PR businesses with the community, is what their goal is right now. It's the event they're talking about. This will serve to help create an awareness for the residents and the businesses of what the types of businesses are available to them within the city. This will also serve to build community among the business owners, as well as with the residents. And then the next Planning Commission meeting and DDA meeting will be held on a special date coming up. It'll be Monday, May fourth, at seven p.m. At this meeting, Bob Gibbs, who is leading the Woodward six ninety-six study, will present the draft of his final recommendations. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Sure, I can get Historical Commission?
Please.
The home and garden tour plans are well underway. The home and garden tour is scheduled for June sixth. The Historical Commission still is looking for residents that are interested in putting their home or their garden on the tour. If you are interested, please get hold of someone at City Hall or one of the members of the commission. They'll be happy to, you know, get your information and get you on the tour. They do need to have a commitment by their next meeting, which is May sixth, so time is of the essence. So if you please want to be on the tour, have any interest in the tour, feel free to contact City Hall or one of the Historical Commission members.
Okay. Any other questions, Congress? Move on to item ten, consideration of the following consent agenda. We have six items currently on the consent agenda. Minutes of the public hearing, the regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, March tenth, the month of discussion report, resolution encouraging MDOT to prioritize the implementation of the low-cost pilot projects at the I six ninety-six and Woodward Intersections, resolution recognizing the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, resolution recognizing April as Fair Housing Month, and a request by the Seventh Day Adventist Church to solicit door-to-door for the months of June, July, and August two thousand and fifteen.
Your mayor, I would just ask that Agenda Item Ten C be removed for discussion. So I would like to move that consent agenda be approved as listed after the removal of Item Ten C.
Okay, so move. Do we have seconds?
One second.
Okay, can we take a vote?
Commissioner Kryziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. We'll now move on. We'll call, it was Section Ten C, we'll call it Ten A on the agenda, but it's a resolution encouraging MDOT to prioritize the implementation of low-cost pilot projects at the I six ninety-six and Woodward Intersections.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would just ask our city manager, Jim, if you could give a little feedback on a couple of items. One, where the other named communities are in the process, and another item I have is how will our residents be able to contribute their feedback to the, the process, and just an overall understanding of, of the timeline that we have in front of us for this Woodward six ninety-six intersection project.
Sure thing. So the resolution that's before you is something that led by the WA3, Royal Oak and Huntington Woods, my counterpart in Huntington Woods, Amy Sullivan, and Tim Quing, who's the Community Development Director in Royal Oak, we've been kind of working together on this resolution, and all three of the communities are going to adopt it. The resolution before you is aimed at MDOT. One of the things that came out of the charrette process with the public was really looking at different timeframes for making improvements to the Woodward six ninety-six intersection, to try to make that more inviting and welcoming for pedestrians and bicyclists, more of a complete streets improvement to the intersection within the existing curb lines as exist today. That's a low-cost, immediate kind of implementation measure. Then, of course, there's the long-term solutions, and, you know, the one that people seem to be focusing on is filling in the ditch, but, you know, even if that happens, that's at the end of the useful life of the underpass or the ditch, whatever you want to call it. So that's, that's far down the road. What we're focused on right now with this resolution is asking MDOT to start to work with us now, this year, to implement some of the short-term pilot projects, as we're calling them. And it's really done with barrels and paint, to test some of these ways of reclaiming excess pavement that, that cars don't really need. To, to have a functioning, you know, well, well-functioning intersection for cars, you don't need all of the lanes that are out there today. So there's excess capacity that we can take back to make it a nicer place for people. So I got a little heads up from you this afternoon that you might pull this off. So what I did is, the Gibbs Planning Group had sent over in-your packets, and this is available online for anyone who wants to download the, the meeting packet from the, from our city's website. I took these out of that report that Gibbs Planning Group provided in support of this resolution. So basically, just to give a flavor for what we're talking about, this is an example of one potential way that these short-term improvements proceed. This is actually looking west at the corner of Main Street and the six ninety-six Service Drive, and that, that green space that you see is that triangle piece in between Woodward and Main Street. So it's just right here in town. So what they're showing is, the first step is you put the barrels out there to take that lane out of travel, is the first test, and then what you do is you just observe how traffic functions. Does, does everything move right? Does this cause chaos and throw the world off its axis, or does everything pretty much proceed as normal? So it's really a test project, and if we find that the barrels do in fact work, then you can make that semi-permanent with paint, which is a low-cost way of making that, that reclamation of that space more permanent. And then once budgets permit, you can actually move the curbs out, and when you have more green space in between the sidewalk and street there, what, what those curbs being moved out would allow us for is to plant some street trees. By MDOT's regulations right now, you can't plant street trees in that strip of grass. It's in between the existing travel lane and the sidewalk, because it doesn't meet MDOT's requirements for clear area on the side of the road. You always want at least ten feet between what they call fixed immovable objects, or trees, as a human being would call them. They want ten feet between that tree and, and the pavement. So if you reclaim that lane, you could actually plant trees, and then what that does is makes it a nicer place for people to walk, because those fixed immovable objects actually serve a purpose, is they actually, they do make people feel safer, because when cars are whizzing by you at forty-five, or fifty, or sixty, or whatever, cars are traveling on that service drive, having those trees actually provides a sense of safety to you, because there is a barrier between you and the traveling cars. You're not standing or walking five feet from very fast, loud-moving traffic. So where are these improvements that are included in this? Well, the first one is right here along Main Street. By way of context, we have about fifty thousand cars per day that travel north and south on Woodward. We have eight lanes of traffic that handle that south of us where the ditch begins, and we have fourteen lanes of traffic at Main Street and six ninety-six, carrying basically the exact same amount of cars. So we have some excess capacity. One of the things we find is that this is a difficult crossing here, because it's wide. This is the bend off of Woodward on the Main Street. So one of the things that Gibbs is proposing is that we take the outside lane here to provide a better buffer and to also provide the potential for a bike lane, which would continue along the existing sort of raised concrete area, to make this a nicer crossing from Pleasant Ridge up north into Royal Oak. This is actually a fairly heavily traveled pedestrian route, because it does go straight into downtown Royal Oak. So that's one example of one of the places that we should look at doing one of these pilot projects. This is what we saw in that photomorph, where this outside lane, which is fairly rarely used, except for people who want to fly by and then cut over at the last minute to get on the six ninety-six, which really sort of encourages reckless driving, but is, is fairly lightly used. This could be taken to provide for a better buffer between the sidewalk and the traveling traffic, to make the connection across Woodward at this location nicer and more amenable for pedestrians to use. At this, striking here, would visually narrow down this turnaround. One of the things that we saw this past winter, if you ever used that turnaround, that you might have noticed, is that this vast concrete area, well, it exists, but when the snow was there, the plow came through and plowed a strip here, and there was a light remaining, there was some snow that remained here, and there were no tire tracks in it for weeks and weeks and weeks after the snow fell. So no car ever drives on this portion. It's just an example of the excess pavement that's out there that could be reclaimed to widen this pedestrian area up. Right now, you're standing on concrete in between two travel lanes with no, really any shielding or greening to make you feel safe or welcome there as a pedestrian, sort of feel like you're standing on Mars. So any space that we can reclaim would still allow all the cars to travel that use that today, but just make it nicer. This is then moving north. This is the westbound Service Drive. This is six ninety-six Woodward. The turnaround here, it's a similar proposal to reclaim some of these lanes that are not used and to make this nicer for people crossing across Woodward on the north side of, of six ninety-six. This is at Washington, and then this is the road that goes under the zoo parking deck. When the zoo has their busy days, and this past Sunday, if you happened to be out in the early afternoon, it was insanity trying to get to the zoo. So people were parking, excuse me, in the overflow parking lot. Well, when they park there, they have to somehow cross all of this to get to the zoo. It's a very narrow, probably three-foot-wide sidewalk here, and you see families of strollers trying to push their kids across. And not only that, but there's signs here which obstruct the, the route. So this is a proposal to take this. So this is a proposal to take this and widen it so that you have extra pedestrian crossing, excuse me, pedestrian crossing way to make this crossing over to the zoo easier along that route. Here, I think we have about 200 cars per day that make the right turn out of this lane. So we have 200 cars a day that are using this space. If we were able to reclaim this, it shortens up the pedestrian crossing here and here. And for a pedestrian, crossing four lanes of travel is daunting because when you're walking, you could shorten this crossing up by 20 feet. That's a big difference for how long it takes you to get across this travel lane. And it just makes it easier and nicer for pedestrians and bicyclists of all abilities to make it across there. You could still do the right turn out of the three lanes that we have here because at 200 cars per day making this turn is hardly a high-demand turning movement. And then you'll see there's a similar improvement here, which would shorten up the crossing distance at this intersection, which is a little bit to the west along the 10-mile Service Drive. So this is where you have another one of those concrete islands, so making some improvements to make this more of a nice crossing here across the Service Drive, which would then let you get into the zoo through that entrance or continue up should you so desire. So, you know, this is just some other bonus material that I threw in. One of the things we often hear is, you know, oh, you can't take car lanes, it just, it won't work. But we're seeing some secular changes in travel demand. This is vehicle miles traveled on all roads adjusted for population growth. So this is per capita miles traveled. And the interesting thing that you see is it was pretty much a consistent rate of growth, you know, punctuated by some recessions. This is recessions here in the gray strips. And this is done by Dshort.com, which is a very fascinating website, I find, if you might want to check it out. But he's been tracking this for years now. And the interesting thing you find is that people seem to think, you know, there's been a fall in vehicle miles traveled per capita. It actually began before the last recession. You'll see that it started declining, and then the recession sped it up, but then the trend continued. And we've seen a little uptick lately. We don't know where this is going to go yet, but this is an interesting pattern that we've seen. People are driving less than they used to. There's been more of a demand for other forms of transportation. And this is just a point to illustrate the fallacy of extrapolating current trends into the future. The future never follows current trends exactly. You go any distance out, and human beings are awful at predicting the future. And the point here is that these are federal projections of traffic growth. And from, you know, before 1994, right on up until about 2002, they were pretty accurate because they think the world wasn't really changing. But then, all of a sudden, as vehicle miles traveled peaked, and this is not population-adjusted, this is vehicle miles traveled staying basically level even with population growth, they continue to project based on past trends. And so what we find is that when they were projecting in 2001 that vehicle miles traveled, it would have been, you know, huge today if that trend had continued. But that's traffic that doesn't exist on the roads. And the key point here is all of our roads have been designed as if that traffic was going to show up, and it doesn't exist. So the point here is that we create the future that we want. So while it might seem crazy that, oh, nobody walks or nobody walks or bikes across this Woodward 696 intersection today, and I'm on my soapbox here, but the reason for that is it's not hospitable to people. If you design for people, you get people. If you design for cars, you get cars. So that's the whole point of this study, is to start to design for people as well as cars to get the ball moving on making some of these long-term changes to create the kind of place that we want for ourselves. And the final thing I'm going to add is, you know, this is just an interesting point here. This is vehicle miles traveled. This is GDP growth, and this is adjusted to a baseline of 100 in 1970. So you adjust the rates of growth to normalize these. In 1996, we actually started having decoupling of GDP growth from vehicle miles traveled, which is very interesting. For a long time, the economy was dependent on us driving more, on new development, on car-centric development. Today, we're finding that that's not the case. GDP is continuing to grow even as we drive less compared to the past. So thinking about the world, where is this chair coming down? Thinking about, you know, the world as it existed even 10 or 15 years ago, that isn't necessarily the future that we want for ourselves. So that's why we're asking you to pass this resolution. What this resolution does is it's a message to MDOT. It's pointed at MDOT, asking them to start working with us to allow us to do these pilot projects this summer, ideally. Many other people are copying it, one of them being Representative Wittenberg, because our goal is to bring all interested people, all interested allies on board to help us work with MDOT to make this happen. So that's, that's in a nutshell, not a nutshell, it's more than a nutshell. That's what this resolution is asking for. How residents participate? The charrette process was really the way to participate in this. When we start doing things inside the roadway, we enter the world of the transportation engineer and all the standards and armature that surrounds that. So we have accepted standards for non-motorized facilities. What we do is going to follow those accepted and adopted standards that come from the federal government that come down to MDOT, that are adopted through all of the transportation design manuals. Once we get the pilot projects going, really, it's proof of concept that these lane reductions work. The next step, then, is to make them permanent and actually put in the non-motorized pedestrian and bike infrastructure. So this is not one of those situations where there will be a lot of opportunity for pedestrian comment, but of course, we'll be interested in hearing what people think and how these things, you know, make them feel getting across there. But really, the ball's in MDOT's court on a lot of this stuff, so. It's probably more than you wanted.
No, it's exactly what I wanted, and I appreciate the time you spent explaining that. I think it's really fascinating when you think about the improvements. And like you said, I share your vision for a walkable Woodward 696 interchange. I think that should be the goal of all the interested parties here, and we should communicate that to MDOT, that what was designed for optimal motorized vehicle traffic may have worked well in the past, but we'd like to see something different in the future for the three affected communities. And in my opinion, it's really a regional issue because when we start talking about, you know, improvements to our transportation system, one of those improvements is going to be non-motorized. And I think this is going to continue to be a key component of that regional issue, people getting around Metro Detroit in various ways. And the 696 Woodward interchange is crucial. I would just, I know in your memo you talked about the upcoming timeline in the future city commission meetings, May and then June. If you could just share for the residents what you're thinking as far as when Bob Gibbs would be here and when a potential adoption of the final plan would be before our body.
Sure. The schedule is Bob is confirmed to be at our planning commission on May 4th. He's, we're very lucky that we have Bob working on this. He's a national consultant, so we have to work around his travel schedule. So we actually moved the planning commission meeting to be able to accommodate him coming to our planning commission meeting to present the first draft of their final recommendations for comment, reaction by our planning commission. I'm going to encourage the city commission to also plan on attending that meeting if you have interest because we initially wanted, we're trying to get Bob to attend the May 12th planning, city commission meeting to present the final draft recommendations. We're waiting for confirmation on that. We may, I can't guarantee that he'll be here on the 12th. However, for the public, for anyone who's been following this process and is interested in it, we are confirmed at the community center on Thursday, May 14th is going to be the public presentation of the final recommendations of the charrette. So there's a couple opportunities that we have confirmed, May 4th at City Hall here for the planning commission meeting, or May 14th, which is a Thursday, at the community center. And I believe that's at 6:30. We'll have the information on the website on the exact time for that. Those are the opportunities. And then, once we have the public presentation, he'll be able to go back and make any final edits or tweaks to the plan and the recommendations. And we anticipate bringing that final report forward to you in June, at the June meeting for your adoption.
Great. Thank you for going over that timeline. I can just speak for myself. One thing that I'm excited about the pilot program is that it does allow an experimental period with these projects to really see in the real world how they're going to affect our day-to-day traffic flows. And it's not a lasting commitment. And if we do put something in place that obviously is not going to be a long-term solution that we can work ourselves, you know, we can pick the barrels up, we can paint over the painted lines and start over at a, looking for a solution. So I'm really excited to get this process going, and I'm really encouraged by working with Mr. Gibbs. I share your appreciation for his, you know, abilities, and I think this is going to be, you know, one of the, this, I would like to ask him if this is one of the more difficult problems that he's encountered because there's so many things going on at this intersection. I'm really looking forward to the final presentation. One thing also that I was encouraged by, the memo that he did send out, was that, you know, through this body or through other agencies, it will be publicly agreed upon. So this is not something that necessarily we as a body here in Pleasant Ridge or even our residents will not have some say in as far as these long-term commitments to improving this intersection. So I'm encouraged by that, you know, that there will be an opportunity, you know, for this body and our residents to really give feedback on this process. So that's one reason why, you know, I'm in support of this project going forward. And again, I appreciate the time. I know this was on the consent agenda, and I do appreciate you taking this off to discuss in a little more detail because I do think it's a benefit to the residents. You know, in the future, if they start seeing, you know, construction barrels up with no construction, right, obviously, there's going to be questions there. And then if they're kind of, if we're all involved in the long-term vision and where we want to get, then I think that's going to be easier for them to accept having these barrels there. Like you mentioned, they're in low-traffic lanes, they're not being used anyway. So again, thank you for the detail and going in depth on this.
Great, so is there any other? May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mayor, I move that the resolution encouraging the Michigan Department of Transportation to prioritize the implementation of low-cost pilot projects identified by the Gibbs Planning Group in their memo dated March 19th, 2015, for the I-696 and Woodward Intersections be approved.
Is there a second? A second? Do we have a vote?
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Jim, I won't ask you about item number four, or 75.
Good call.
Next item is consideration of the resolution regarding establishing fees for certain licenses, permits, and applications required by the city code.
Jim, do you? Whatever I can do to help. Yeah.
Good.
Whatever I can, yeah, yeah. Sorry afterwards, but whatever I can do to help.
That's right. I'll give you a paint can.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to do that, either manual labor or, you know, if you need to advocate on your behalf or work with MDOT. This is something I'm with you on this and want to support and help out.
It's an exciting, exciting opportunity.
It is, yeah, thank you.
Put your hands across the board. Are you ready?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
Excellent.
This actually, city clerk Amy.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Amy, please.
This is her game.
Hey.
Yeah, I guess.
That's right, it's your game.
Yeah. Well, I presented to all of you a proposed fee schedule for the building department for general city operations and for a recreation center rental increase. The fees for these particular services haven't been increased since 2003, and the building department in particular hasn't been increased since 1997. So we were well below the average of surrounding communities, what they were charging for their permits. And with green technologies being created and more things being available to be added to an alteration of your property, those things weren't identified on our permit. So contractors weren't permitting them, the building official or mechanical inspector were going out, were looking, saying, hey, they're doing this, this, and this. And we didn't really have a way to charge for those particular services. So over the past several months, we, you know, surveyed the surrounding communities to see what they're charging, what types of things they're permitting for, what types of things they're not permitting for. And we kind of came up with the fee schedules that, again, that I presented to all of you in the packet. The biggest increase in the building department fee schedules was the first $1,000 of value. It went from $30 to $50, which is a large increase. But again, we're still well below what the other communities are charging, and we're, again, below the average. So we're at least getting fairer than what we're charging. The second piece of that, we're going from $10 for each additional $1,000 to $15 to each additional $1,000 for that building permit fee. It represents roughly a 60% increase, which does seem like a large increase, but we did have three complete demolitions and rebuilds this year. So when we went back through and kind of said, okay, in 2014, here's how much permit revenue we've taken in, how much would we have taken in if we had implemented this fee schedule a year prior? Those permits were in there, and the mechanical permits, their minimum fee, kind of boosted when you could get four items on a minimum permit currently, and you wouldn't be able to do that under the new schedule. The recreation center is looking at an eight, a 9% to 11% increase. Currently, residents only can rent the community center for $120 for the large room, the small room $90, and the kitchen is an additional 50. That's for a four-hour block of time. The proposed rate would be $135 for this large room, $100 for the small room, and $55 for the kitchen. If you wanted to serve beer and wine at your function, there would be an additional fee for that, $25 additional from the current rate to, for the small and large room, and then $5 for the kitchen. The kitchen's never rented solely on its own, it's always in conjunction with another room, so. And then each additional hour, they went up between $5 and $10. Finally, the general department fees, the specific example that I provided to all of you was a zoning board of appeals meeting. Currently, we charge $75 for a zoning board meeting. We have to publish that in the newspaper of general circulation. That ad could be well beyond the $75 that the homeowners paying for that meeting. So we're requesting that be raised. And then copy charges, notary services for non-residents, annual reviews for liquor licenses and for outdoor dining, we didn't have a charge for that prior. And then a few other things that the city manager noted that, you know, as the city is progressing and we're doing more things in our business districts and in our residential district, here's some things that we probably should be charging for because it is taking staff time away from something else. So I am requesting that the resolution for the fees, permits, and applications be approved and that they go into effect May 15th so that we have a chance to post them on our website, post them in City Hall, and get people ready that the fees go into effect.
May I just ask? The hope is also that as the fees increase, we'll be able to put some of that money toward code enforcement, if I actually start to, which I know a lot of people are even bringing it up among our residents that are very aware.
Building department specifically, those fees, the increase in those fees could enhance the code enforcement division of that department. Currently, the police officers do a lot of code enforcement, and, you know, I mean, they do have other responsibilities aside from that someone has paint on their house, you know? So we would like to beef up the code enforcement division of the building department.
Is there a motion to adopt the license fees and permits?
I move that the resolution establishing fees for certain licenses, permits, and applications as required by the city code be adopted and the new fee schedule be effective May 15th, 2015.
Is there a second?
A second?
Do we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the municipal street lighting upgrade and project financing. First, we will address the master agreement for the citywide municipal street lighting upgrade between the city of Pleasant Ridge and DTE Energy.
We are very happy to bring this before you. It's something that's been talked about for quite a while now, but we are on DTE's list to get all of our streetlights, all of our streetlights, converted. our streetlights converted over to new LED fixtures. I don't know if there's another community right now that is 100% LED street lighting. And if there is one, they probably have a population smaller than us. But the details of the program are, it will cost, excuse me, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to complete the changeover. There is an energy optimization rebate that DTE provides, which basically is an incentive to convert all of the old mercury vapor overhead fixtures, which are the least efficient. So there would be a rebate of eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which DT would bring us a check. I don't know if it's one of those big publishers clearinghouse checks, but they'll bring us a check afterwards. So that makes the net cost of the project forty-one thousand dollars, forty-one thousand, eighty-one dollars to do this conversion. Now, the payback on the back end, of course, is that LED lamps are more efficient. So our yearly street lighting maintenance and operation fees would go down from forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six cents to thirty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-five cents. So that's an annual savings of about eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars to the city, which obviously is a benefit. Now, the one thing I want to point out is, you may have heard of the pending rate case that DTE has made to the Public Service Commission to raise the rates that they currently charge. The numbers that are quoted here are the proposed rates. And one of the things that you also may have heard is they're proposing to raise the LED rates more than the standard rates, basically, which have the effect of reducing the economic benefit of LED lights. But there's still the payback for us even if the rates go through with Public Service Commission. And I think they're scheduled to act in December on that. If that rate increase doesn't go through, our payback numbers actually look better than that. So this is numbers that I suppose you could say are conservative. Our DT representative told us that the project could be completed within six to eight weeks of approval of the agreement. But I would not wager your firstborn or anything of any value on that being completed in that timeframe. We hope that it's completed, but the worst cases, I think the quote was six to eight weeks, but the upgrades have to be done by November 30th. So, once we get on DTE's schedule, we will know more if the commission approves the contract with DTE tonight. So before you, oh, and finally, the one final detail. We are proposing to fund these improvements through a loan from SCAF. This will have the benefit, it'll actually have two benefits. By paying back the loan in equal installments of eleven thousand dollars over the next four budget years, we'll have a zero net impact on our general fund. We won't be using general fund reserves to pay for this. The other benefit is that right now SCAF is yielding about 0.8% interest. So by loaning the money to ourselves and paying it back at eleven thousand dollars over four budget years, we'll actually realize a little bit better rate of return with zero impact on our general fund. And then once those four years are over, we'll be reaping the rewards of eleven thousand dollars of money that we didn't have in the past. So the requested action is approval of the attached master agreement for municipal street lighting and the use of a SCAF loan to finance the conversion costs to be paid back in equal annual payments of eleven thousand dollars over a period of four fiscal years. And that would begin with the upcoming 15, 16 fiscal year.
Okay, let me ask, do this in two pieces. First, can I have a motion to approve the master agreement? Your Honor, I move that the master agreement for the citywide municipal streetlight upgrade between the city of Pleasant Ridge and DTE Energy be approved. Second, may we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion approved. The next item is, do we have a motion to move for segregated capital funds financing?
Mayor, I move that the segregated capital assets fund, or SCAF, finance the citywide municipal streetlight upgrade over four years as recommended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion I didn't have?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to say that I am extremely happy that we'll be able to do this conversion this year. And I think the Recreation Center improvements in the parking lot there were kind of just some proof that this is really a viable option for us to look into and we can really save a good deal of money in the long term. Of course, with any steps to get more green, many of these steps are going to be cost prohibitive. This is one where it isn't. And loaning the money to ourselves, we can do this fairly easily. And we're not putting this on the backs of the residents with a special assessment or something of that nature. So to me, this whole thing is used to a win-win. It's a can't miss and it's a must-do. So I'm very excited to get it done.
Okay, so, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item, consideration of the following bid, the Oxford Boulevard Road Reconstruction Project. Jody, it's good that you're still here.
We sent out the Oxford Road project for bids and included in that bid were two alternates, which are basically add-ons to that bid which the city may or may not elect to do. Those alternates were to reconstruct the alleys from Ten Mile to Devonshire and also the alley from Amherst to Sylvan. Were those two alley projects to be completed, we would basically have completed our alley reconstruction on the east side behind the business district. We do have a presentation underlying some of this. We did end up with a little bit of a, well, I wouldn't say it was a surprise, but it was an unfortunate realization of what we anticipated was coming. Delicio, who did the Cambridge Road Reconstruction last year, was our low bidder. And actually, we were very happy and pleased with the work that they did last year. They were very professional and completed the work in a very good manner. So we were happy that they were the little bid. The bad news is that the bid for Oxford Reconstruction alone came in at eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars this year, which is a pretty astronomical price. So it's not out of line with trends that we're seeing for construction across the region. As municipality, those finances start to stabilize and those projects that must be done are getting done, the refining is that the recession had the effect of driving out some of the contractors who used to do this kind of work. In addition to that, there's double-digit percentage increases in the material costs for concrete right now. So when you add fewer contractors available to do the work and material costs that are going up at a pretty astronomical rate, construction bids are coming in very, very high. So the total bid is 1.15 million dollars to do Oxford and the two alleys. And just to give some context to the scale of this cost increase, this is an inflation-adjusted cost per square foot basis for all of our road reconstruction projects since the infrastructure improvement program began back in 95. And this is, again, adjusted for inflation, so it's all in 2015 dollars. And by cost per square foot, we can normalize our avenues, which are 27 feet wide, and boulevards, which actually have 40 feet of pavement. So the costs are a little bit more when you rebuild a boulevard. So we do a cost per square foot basis to normalize across those. And you see that the high dot in 2015, that is the cost of the Oxford bid. It's over eighteen dollars a square foot. The one slightly below was last year's Cambridge project, which the cost increase had started. And for a long time, we had costs in the eight to nine dollars a square foot range. So basically, we've doubled what we were paying in the past for our road projects, putting us in a tough spot. So how we propose to fund these projects, total cost is 1.15 million. Water and Sewer Fund can handle some of the underground work. We replace some sewers. We do some manhole replacement. We do things that are sewer maintenance while we have the road dug up. So we can use some Water and Sewer Fund money on that. There is money set aside in the Water and Sewer Fund budget for maintenance and repairs. The DDA has been supporting some of the alley reconstruction. This hundred thousand dollar number is the starting point. The DDA did discuss at their last meeting whether they wanted to go forward funding both the alley projects or just the Ten Mile to Devonshire project. And there was interest in doing both. So we may be talking to the DDA about them allocating some future-year funding to contribute back to this project. So that hundred thousand dollar contribution may go up, but we don't have final budget approved with the DDA yet. So I didn't want to include anything more. Local Street Fund does have some money to contribute to this project. And then we have the infrastructure millage revenue of four hundred thousand dollars, giving us total funding available of about seven hundred thousand dollars. So that leaves a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall, which is quite large. We haven't, this is a little bit unprecedented. We haven't faced a situation like this in the past. Now, as we plan for the future with this new reality, just to provide some context for what this means, Oxford was discussed about being done last year. The high bids that came back made that impossible last year. Even this year, it's difficult to do, but we're going to get it done this year. We have these funding sources available to us. And you see here that it's going to leave us with a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall. As we go forward, next year, one of the things we've done is we've pushed off some of the sewer reconstruction costs from Cambridge and Oxford. Last year, we had more difficulty with the Cambridge sewer when we were trying to reconstruct and replace the sections of that sewer than we have in the past for our road projects. So they told us that, you know, there's a process now where you can actually put an insert in the existing sewer. You heat it up. It's plastic that you warm up and it gets pliable and then you flash it and it gets hard and freezes in place. And it's basically like getting a brand-new sewer without having to dig up the road. So what we're proposing is next year, while we recover from our negative balance, we would do that Cambridge and Oxford sewer lining as we replenish some of our funds. We'd like Cambridge and Oxford getting a brand-new sewer without having to dig up and replace the whole thing. So it's a good cost-effective way of getting that done. After we repay some of the money here that we've loaned ourselves, next year, we'll end up with a ninety thousand dollar debt that we are left to repay. 2017 and 18, we'll pay that off and we'll start to build up funds for Norwich and Hanover. These streets, this reflects the new cost per square foot basis. You know, those costs could keep going up. More firms could enter the market and we could get better bids. We don't know what may happen with prices in the future, but the fact of the matter is, we're looking at 2018, 19 at the earliest before we're going to be in a position to do Norwich and Hanover is if we go with the pay-as-you-go process for this. If Norwich all of a sudden, or Hanover, either one, they're both in comparable shape, if either one of those starts to suddenly just disintegrate on us, which we don't expect to happen, we could look at forwarding or borrowing to get those projects done on an earlier basis if we have to. But our infrastructure millage is not a debt millage. It's a pay-as-you-go millage. So we prefer not to borrow as much as we can. So we're looking at 2018, 19 to do those streets. And then what we're looking at for Ridge is six or seven years down the line before we can save up the money to redo Ridge, which obviously is a very long, I mean, expensive road to do. So this is our future plan as we sit today. If the May 5th ballot proposal goes forward, this local major streets contribution will go up and will give us some more money to get some of this work done, may move some of these projects forward, but we're not counting on that money at this time. So we do think we can get some additional cost savings. That eight point, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the Oxford bid did include some things that we could issue change orders to reduce the cost for. We don't know the exact amount of that yet, but one of the things was total sidewalk replacement in the Oxford bid. We are probably not going to replace all of the sidewalks on Oxford. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One of the things you may remember last year is when we cut out all of the sidewalks and tore up the street on Cambridge, our street trees suffered from it. And you may remember that three or four of the trees we were trying to save were pretty sizable on Cambridge and that were in very good shape. When you take out the sidewalk and the street, you expose the root ball structure. You expose the roots and the roots lose their planting. They actually use the street and sidewalk to help buttress them and keep them from falling over. And when both of those were taken out, we lost four trees through windstorms. So that was a unfortunate happenstance. The other thing is we now, with the passage of the millage last year, we will be starting a sidewalk maintenance and replacement program. So the sidewalks that are in bad shape will get taken care of through that program. There's no longer the need to do that through the street program because we'll have another funding source to take care of the worst sidewalks. So we will get to the bad sidewalks on Oxford this year or in future years. We can't promise that, but we won't be doing a wholesale replacement. And we've walked Oxford and the sidewalks are old. Fine and large, they're in good shape. And in the past, with our street projects, we haven't always done the sidewalks. If the sidewalks on the street were in very bad shape, we replaced them. There were many streets that we replaced the street and didn't do the sidewalks. So it's happened both ways in the past. That's one change order we'll be looking at to save some costs, which should bring down that overall cost. And we do have the potential for additional DDA contribution on a multi-year basis, which could defray some of this cost, but we don't have that as a guarantee yet. So we're moving forward on the basis of approving the entire bid and then we'll adjust that back as we can through the process. Timing, we actually have a pre-construction meeting speculatively scheduled for tomorrow for the pre-construction process. Delicio wants to get started on our alleys post haste. They want to make it their first project that they tackle this year. So the idea is they will get going on the alleys within weeks. And then after they finish up the alley work, while they're in town, they move their equipment over and start on the Oxford project. And that's scheduled for June. Ideally, right around when school lets out, we start the construction project on June. So we will keep residents posted as that schedule gets nailed down. Should this all be approved tonight, we'll have that pre-construction meeting tomorrow and start to put a fine point on these details. So with that, there's a following. There's a recommendation before you to approve the construction bid plus a 5% contingency should we meet it. And then also to use another loan from SCAF to finance this over a budget year to be repaid in the future from infrastructure fund, infrastructure millage funding and any other sources such as DDA funding that may become available as approved. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. We're not to do this by borrowing money from ourselves, but it beats the alternative from borrowing money from the bank where you'd certainly pay a higher interest rate or even bonding for this where you'd pay even more for the bond placement. So we want to get Oxford done this year and this is how we're proposing to do it.
Yeah, question. So as mentioned, future road reconstructions will most likely be delayed as a result of this increase in costs. Regarding maintenance in the meantime, though, we've had discussions about it. We did one thing last year with the citywide kind of sealing and filling process, all roads in the city. Is that part of the plan for this coming year and years in the meantime when we're not replacing roads that may be decaying and exceeding their useful life?
Absolutely. The money that we showed in the chart from the local street fund, which is available to pay for this, that's a capital improvement cost. There's also money programmed every year in our local and major street funds for maintenance and repairs. And the spray patching we did last year has held up quite well. That's something that we will continue to do and we're getting ready to do the first round here soon as the weather improves and we can do that. So that's something we will continue to do to try to prolong the useful life of our roads. And was there another part of the question?
No, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jim, I just wanted to mention in the motion that we have before us for consideration, so mention on the SCAF loan, we have to create a separate motion for that?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
And for that, for wording for that, I would refer back to the street lighting, so the language you have in the packet for approval of the street lighting funding loan. And I would say that you moved to, you moved that the segregated capital assets fund financed the Oxford Boulevard Road Reconstruction Project over one year as recommended.
The one thing that we weren't positive on that was the amount because of the, what the DDA was going to be kicking in. So I think that was part of the reason that wasn't on there. We were, me and Jim were mulling over those numbers for the last couple of weeks now. So it's
Yeah, I just wanted to
One of those things that the number will come to you guys and we'll let you know what that is. It was, weren't sure what that final was. It was, weren't sure what that final was gonna be, I know what the DDA was gonna kick in.
Right, and it is our utmost commitment to pay that back in one budget?
So should we make that motion?
Should we make two motions?
So do I have a motion to award the bid?
Mayor, I moved that the bid for the Oxford Boulevard Road Reconstruction Project, including Alternates One and Two for the alley reconstruction from Sylvan to Eastbound Ten Mile Road, be awarded to the lowest qualified bidder, Delicio Contracting, Inc. of Clinton Township, in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and eight cents, plus a five percent contingency for a total bid amount of one million, two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Is there a second?
I support.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Now, may I have a motion to approve the use of SCAF funds?
Mayor, I moved that the segregated capital assets fund, or SCAF, finance the Oxford Boulevard Road Reconstruction Project over one year as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second? Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Next item, consideration of the request by the Pleasant Ridge Foundation for the city to donate certain items to its annual auction Saturday, May sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Scott?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is a yearly item, the city donates a number of items to the foundation, so they can auction them off at the annual auction that is the third Saturday in May this year, it's May sixteenth, at the community center. So we just do like to present these to the city commission and kinda go over them briefly. We have typical ones, there's some community center rentals in there, a summer fund package that includes some pool passes, a concession credit, a summer program registration, a private pool party for ten. The party's private really from eight to nine, the first part of it is, while the pool is regularly open. Two name-of-street signs, that's always a huge, huge item, a police ride-along, and this year, we're trying to, gonna try again to do the reserved lounge chair at the pool. So we'll have a lounge chair that is purchased and has, is locked up somewhere on the pool deck, and we will, we'll give that person who wins that item the key for that lounger, and they'll be able to get it and have a spot reserved for themselves at the pool. So that's, it can be an exciting item and something that you can kinda brag about if you have a different chair at the pool. So every year, we kinda try to change these up or do something a little different, just to, you know, kinda spice it up with the foundation, and I discuss these with Keith Cunningham, the president, and he was, he was more than thrilled with them, so. Any other questions?
Scott, will the reserved lounge chair be next to the mayor's standing reserve?
Yeah. Officially, the mayor does not have a reserved lounge chair at the pool. However, he is there usually, one of the first ones there, so he kinda uses as his a pick, a pick of the litter, we could say, but they will have a nice sunny spot or a nice shady spot, wherever the person who purchased it would like.
Thinking about this, though.
I was talking to the mayor earlier about it, and he was, I could see the wheels turning, so watch it there, watch that bid card.
I thought I got a chair, but I didn't. Now, this will be it. Thanks, any questions?
Are you still gonna have the, what is it, the polar plunge the day before?
Um, we are, at this time, we're planning on doing that. It's very weather-dependent, because last year, we had a very cold May, so the water was still cold. So we are going to do something the night before, whether it's a polar plunge or has some kinda different spin on it. We haven't, we didn't put that out there, because if it turns eighty very quickly, I mean, if you were, they pulled the cover off today, and we saved just about all of the water, so I did the math on it, it was about three thousand dollars of the water that we're able to reuse, so you could jump in it now if you wanted to. It's clean, but very cold, but.
Just give me a chair.
Yeah. So we'll keep, keep your eyes open for that event, we'll have something going on that night.
Twenty fifteen?
Yep.
That's great.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the items recommended?
Your honor, I move that the city commission approve the items recommended by the city administration as donations to the Pleasant Ridge Foundation for sale at its 2014 annual auction.
Is there a second?
It's twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, sorry.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the utility bill update.
Yes, for anyone who hasn't heard, we are gonna be restructuring our utility bills, which includes garbage pickup and water. For anyone who may not have seen the presentation at the town hall that we did on March thirty-first, I have a very abridged version of that presentation, which I will run through expeditiously right now. So the key points, our utility bills will go down, even as we're seeing increases in wholesale charges to the city on the, on the range of fourteen percent for wholesale water costs, and then increases certainly in our sewage treatment costs, those are all costs that we have to pay that are going up faster than inflation. Because of the approved millage last year, some of the costs that were covered by the waterfront in the future will be moving to the general fund, to be handled administrative costs to the general fund rather than the waterfront, which reduces the amount of expenses that the waterfront has to, has to cover. So we also have regional entities moving towards a fixed cost model. One of the things we've seen is we've had some very wet summers over the past couple of years. In the past, all of the budgets for Detroit Water and Sewer, for Oakland County, they're all based on a pure usage basis. So if you had a wet year, sales went down, and these entities could not cover their costs. And these are all entities that are enterprise funds, which means that they have to generate enough money through sales to cover their costs. So the city, we are starting to be charged fixed costs by these wholesale providers, which we have to pay no matter what. So if it's a wet winter or a wet summer and sales are down again, we have to cover those costs no matter what. So that's a trend that's moving region-wide, and we are gonna join in that trend. Our water rates will be competitive with surrounding communities, as you'll see, but really what it comes down to is that we have expenses in the waterfront that we have to cover, and that's why water rates are where they're at. The waterfront is a separate fund, it's segregated from the general fund, it's not connected with the city's general fund, they're two silos. So water, water sales have to cover the costs in the waterfront. So a cost comparison, and I just gave away the lead on this slide, but across communities, there are different ways of apportioning costs that are borne by the waterfront. You can handle some things through property taxes, water rates, service charges like garbage pickup can be handled in many different ways, that's not a waterfront cost, but it's handled what we currently, commonly refer to as our water bill. You're also paying for garbage pickup on that bill, which increases what you pay out of pocket, and so that's a distinction. So really what it comes down to is, you have to look at the total picture. You have the total budget for a city, which is the general fund and the waterfront, and then you have just the general fund. And the general fund is funded by property taxes, and then the waterfront is funded by water sales. So what we see here is communities break down those costs in different ways. And if you look at it on a per capita basis and normalize across communities, because obviously Southfield is a much different community than Pleasant Ridge in pretty much every way. You have waterfront expenses per capita, which go in declining order in this table. So Hazel Park pays three hundred and eleven dollars per person in their waterfront, Birmingham Pay pays seven hundred and seventy-four dollars per person. If you look at millage rates, there's a general correlation where higher waterfront expenses correlate generally to a lower millage rate. So if you pay less for water, you typically pay a higher property tax rate, just how those costs are apportioned. And this is just another way of looking at the same table. Here, it goes in descending order on millage rate, so if you pay a high millage rate, again, there's that correlation generally where waterfront expenses are lower, and then down here, you pay a low millage rate, they're typically higher. And this is Pleasant Ridge in our current budget year, and this is Pleasant Ridge in our proposed upcoming budget year. And this new millage rate bakes in three new millages, the infrastructure improvement millage, which was approved a year and a half ago, which takes effect this year, the parks improvement millage, which has nothing to do with water, but was voted and is reflected in this number, and then the general operating millage, which is, about two-thirds of which is dedicated towards reducing water and garbage pickup costs, and then the remaining third is an increase. So this is an all-in, fully-loaded millage number here, so this shows where Pleasant Ridge falls. So again, we have wholesale providers moving to a fixed cost model, so we're gonna be billed no matter what sales are for a portion of our wholesale costs, and those fixed costs are set based on a moving average of previous years. So whatever water usage we have this year will impact the fixed costs we pay in future years, but not this year. And this is our total waterfront expenses, this is the nut that we have to cover. You'll see that it is about one point two-five million dollars, moving down to about one point one-five million dollars. Our variable costs, which is water sales, are about a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, and our fixed costs are nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, to give you some basis for the breakdown between our fixed and variable costs in the system, because we have to maintain and operate the system, we have to maintain the pipes in good working order to bring water in your house, we have to maintain the sewers in good working order to take the water away from your house, and that's a big part of the cost, and then we have to pay for the water that's treated when it goes to the sewers as well. For proposed billing structure, we're moving to a fixed ready-to-serve charge, and the ready-to-serve charge covers a portion of those fixed costs that are related to our costs to maintain and operate the system. They're not related to the fixed costs we paid to Oakland County for sewage treatment, that's still handled in the rate, but the ready-to-serve charge is our costs to own and maintain and operate our pipes, which are in the grounds, to take the water to your house and to take it away when you're done. And then there still will be a variable water consumption rate. There's no longer gonna be a minimum bill. One thing is a lot of, there are many households in town who were billed for zero point nine MCF usage, whether you used point one or point eight-nine, you were billed for point nine. That was way in the past of making sure that we had a minimum level of revenue to operate the system. With the fixed ready-to-serve charge, that will take care of handling our minimum level of revenue, and then you'll be billed for only the water you use. So this will be a benefit to our lower-usage households. And we're proposing to go to bimonthly billing, six bills per year instead of four. And the example I use is almost every other utility bill you get, electric, cable, natural gas, you name it, you're billed every month for that. And if you got instead a cable bill every three months for five hundred dollars, that would be a shock, and of course, you could budget for that, you know, we're all adults here, but it's still a shock. So moving to a six bill per year rather than four, we hope to smooth out some of our costs as well in a way that we can administratively handle here without really increasing our administrative costs to the city, so that won't increase costs in the waterfront. So that's our proposal. So the brass tacks, our proposed rate structure, your ready-to-serve charge you receive on your six bills will be twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents, this will be a flat fee. The garbage pickup fee will be fifteen dollars and sixty cents that you receive. Recall, right now, you pay about forty-three dollars and thirty-six cents every quarter, so this is a reduction in garbage pickup fees. And then your variable water and sewer rate will be a hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. And I stress that these numbers are ballpark, they're gonna be accurate, but they may change by two or three percent as our final numbers that we get from Detroit and Oakland County come in, that may change these a little bit. But, you know, we're talking pennies, not dollars, on what this might change. The water and sewer rate, thirty-one dollars and eighty cents of that is related to water, and then sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents is related to sewer costs that we receive. So when we talk about our ready-to-serve charge, that means that for water, you have a guaranteed minimum annual fixed charge of a hundred and seventy dollars. Right now, it's four hundred fifty-one dollars with our minimum bill, so that's, our annual fixed charge will actually go down. So by going to this new model, households will be better able to control what you pay for water, because you'll be truly billed for only what you use. So if you wanna pay less for water, you can now be encouraged to conserve and use less water, and you will pay less for that on your bill. And this is just another way of breaking down the expenses, these are all of our expenses put in the big buckets. So our wholesale water cost is two hundred five thousand dollars, our system maintenance, that's what we have to pay here, pure Pleasant Ridge-based charges to own and operate the system, two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, and these are numbers that are given to us that we have to pay for sewage treatment. All of our stormwater and our sewage go in the same pipe and go to the same facility, and it all has to be treated, so we pay for that, but this is how that breaks down. And then the George W. Coon facility, which was mandated by the courts for pollution control, when we had big rain events, what would happen in the past was that water would go untreated, the sewage water mixed in with the stormwater would go untreated into the regional waterway and would pollute the lakes, so we had court-mandated improvements to Oakland County to construct a big George W. Coon facility, which is this massive underground facility that takes all of that overflow water, treats it so that when it leaves the facility, it's neutral, and there's debt for that. So our share of the debt that's paid by the fourteen communities, I think in the twelve towns during, so twelve times fourteen communities makes sense, our share is a hundred fifteen thousand dollars of that debt. When you take out the money that's generated by our ready-to-serve charge, our system maintenance has covered ninety-nine thousand dollars in the variable rate, so this is how our variable rate breaks down. Twenty-one dollars of that is based on wholesale water, so when you pay the hundred one fifty, twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents of that is related to the water that you've used. Ten dollars and thirty-nine cents goes to system maintenance, and then these are the numbers that go to all the other components for sewage treatment. Let's go over that. So our billing structure comparison currently here, we're quarterly, proposing to go bimonthly. Your fixed fee is two dollars forty cents, that's a meter each fee, that'll go up to the ready-to-serve charge we've talked about. Your variable rate will go down, so this will benefit all users, high-water users and low-water users alike. Zero minimum water usage is compared to the point nine currently, this will benefit our low-water users. Your minimum charge per bill for water will go down to twenty-eight thirty-five instead of the one fifteen twenty-two that it has been, so this is your annual minimum water bill. The garbage pickup fee per bill will go down, and this is a guaranteed savings for every household of about eighty dollars. So your annual minimum utility bill will not be two hundred sixty-three dollars compared to six hundred thirty-four in the past. And when we talk about being cost-competitive with surrounding communities, this is an annual water cost comparison based on the current budget year, because we don't have water rates for all of our surrounding communities, but this is the average usage for Pleasant Ridge household, this is one standard deviation below that mean and one standard deviation above, so this is a low, average, and high-water usage household. You'll see where we slot in with our new rates, we will be lower than Lakewood Village, and lower than Berkeley, and more competitive with these communities. When you look at the average water user, we're right there, we're a little bit higher, and this is annual, not per bill, but we're right in this grouping now. And then our higher-water users will be lower than Lakewood Village and even closer to this grouping here, so we'll be competitive. We still won't be as low, but these numbers will go up for other communities as they have to contend with these double-digit increases in water costs. So we will probably end up being more competitive than this chart shows. So bottom line, your average water savings for each household in town will be eighty-six dollars, garbage pickup savings for every house will be eighty dollars, so that averages a total utility bill savings of a hundred sixty-six dollars per year. Of course, property taxes are going up for the operating millage, the parks and recreation millage, and the infrastructure millage, all of which were voted by the people. So the total net cost impact for each house is gonna depend on taxable value, it's gonna depend on how much water that household uses, so we can't offer any averages there, we just wanna acknowledge that fact. That was abbreviated, I don't know if it was abbreviated or not. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. Any comments, questions? Can we move on to the city manager's report?
Excuse me, I have very little that hasn't been discussed. One thing you may have heard about is an event we're having next Thursday, the residents' reception, where we're gonna have... the residence reception, uh, where we're gonna have, um, many or all of the various clubs, groups, and organizations that exist in Pleasant Ridge. It's gonna be over at the community center, starts at 6:30 PM. If you're planning on attending, we ask that you register online at cityofpleasantridge.org. Uh, the link is available for you to just register your name so that we know you're coming. Um, that helps us plan for the event. But this will be a good way for longtime residents, new residents, to just connect with all the opportunities available to get involved, get active, get connected with your neighbors and all the various groups. Um, so that's, uh, uh, an exciting event, and we hope you'll come out. Even if you lived here for 30 years, uh, there'll be something there for you. We talked about the Woodward 696 recommendation meetings, we won't talk about those. Um, so that's all I have, everything else has been talked about tonight. Scott, did you have anything else that we haven't hit on?
Couple things. Um, again, the new resident reception, uh, make sure you just register for that online. Uh, we're trying to, um, we're trying out a new, like, ticket system for people, so if you, you'll put your name and your email, and it will physically, um, email you some tickets you can bring, or you can, um, bring them on your phone, and we were able to scan them. Um, it, it allows us to kinda keep track of people better and, and for you to remember. It'll send you a reminder, hey, remember you registered for this. So, if you don't have computer access, you can come to the community center, call us, we'll register you and, uh, and be able to get you those kind of tickets. Um, Gainesboro Park, real quick, I, I know we're running short on time here, I, I apologize, but we do have a grand opening of, of ribbon cutting scheduled for May 2nd at 1:00 PM. So, I did wanna kinda show off my new little thing there that I got for the ribbon cutting. So, these are like actual, like, real scissors, I was like kinda impressed by it, so we'll be ready for, um, the mayor and the foundation will be, um, able to cut the ribbon on the new playground in the building, so. Oh, that was kinda... I know, right? It was pretty, uh, I know, we're gonna be using those a couple, I figured with the park, and maybe we'll do, we'll use them for a couple of things, right, exactly.
How do I use it in more of them?
I know, they were, um, like, the reviews were saying, oh, they're great for cutting perfect straight lines on regular paper, and I...
Did you try?
I did not, no. I, I thought it was kinda funny. Thought that would be a nice little touch for the... That, and, um, the citywide road sale, Saturday, May 9th, make sure you register for that. The women's club nacho average brunch, the Saturday, April 18th at 11:00 AM, make sure you register for that. They're running low on tickets. And the Auction Hero and Villains, May 16th at Four Ridge, make sure you get tickets for that. It is busy.
Yeah.
Lots of stuff coming on, so please make sure, uh, you keep checking the website, and, um, we're trying to keep that update. And we're testing live streaming of the meeting, so tonight, we were doing, I had a cou- little, couple difficulties, but hopefully, that's a technology we can bring to everybody here recent, in, uh, upcoming months too, so.
Of course, that's live streaming over the internet.
Yeah, live streaming over the internet, yes. It's always on cable, but, um, live streaming on the internet, so you'll be able to watch it anywhere.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Other business?
Mayor, I have a quick one, I can follow up on something I started to mention during the crime report. Um, again, this just has to do with that one interesting fact. I'll say it again, over 75% of convicted burglars believe that other burglars are using social media to identify their targets. So, please just be smart about what you post on social media. Um, it can seem very benign, but we all love to post things for our friends, family, and colleagues to see, who you're married to, where you went to school, um, where you're going on vacation, when you're going, when you'll be back. Pictures, this is fun stuff to share, fun to talk about, but it can be used against you. It can be used by unscrupulous individuals, so just be careful with that. Also, uh, sites like Facebook have privacy settings you can set and configure, who can see your information, just your friends, friends of friends, everybody. Lock that down to the extent reasonable, reasonably possible for you. Um, it's not difficult to do, there's a configuration setting in, in the upper corner of Facebook. Um, of course, all that goes out the window if someone gets into your account, and they can do whatever they want. So, one way you can protect yourself from that is have a complex password, if at all possible, and try not to use the same password for every single site that you use. If someone hacks into your Facebook account, they can pretty much see everything you like, and they might check other websites that you like and see if you've used the same credentials on those sites, and then get in with your information there as well. So, um, try to use complex passwords wherever possible, mix upper and lowercase letters, funny characters, maybe even a space, don't use something like the name of your dog. One thing I'll end with is the most, uh, common, top 10 most common passwords of 2014. This is readily available on Google to you, me, every bad guy in the world. Um, so the, the 10th is the word football, then it goes dragon, baseball, 1234, 123456789, quarti, 12345678. Number three is 12345. Second most popular is the word password. Number one is 123456. So, these are ridiculous passwords, they're easy to remember, but they're easy for someone else to use against you, so please don't use any of these passwords. If you have them, don't tell us, just change them right away. I don't know if you've seen the movie Spaceballs, but I thought it was ridiculous that they used the password 12345 to unlock their air shield around the planet. I didn't think anyone actually did that, but apparently, lots of people do it. So, don't feel embarrassed, just change it as quickly as you can. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. That's your great work, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a public service announcement, but I do have an announcement for, um, the next book club title. It's called The White Tiger, um, by Ervin Adiga, and we'll be discussing this book on Monday, April 27th, at 7:00 PM at the community center. Um, please come by, even if you haven't read the book, um, we're always welcoming new members, and, um, we'd love to have you stop in. Um, we did decide on a couple future titles as well. In May, we'll be reading The Fool by Christopher Moore, and in June, we'll be reading Stand Facing the Stove, The Story of the Woman Who Gave America the Joy of Cooking by Ann Mendelson. So, if you're interested in any of those titles, please stop by the community center or email me, and I can get you on the announcement list. Um, one final thing, um, I know we've talked about this for many months, um, Mayor, um, we've talked about the little lending libraries, um, for the city. I would like to work with the administration in the coming months to see if we can get a couple of, uh, lending, little lending libraries open, um, on both sides of town. I know the lending library in the community center, um, goes away with the, uh, coming, um, daycare, or the, um, excuse me, the summer camps, and so this would be a good replacement on the west side, and with the improvements at Gainesboro, it seemed like a good opportunity, um, to install one there as well. So, um, I just wanted to let the residents know that it is something that we're looking at doing here in the future, and, uh, stay tuned.
Mayor, um, regarding the foundation event that's coming up on the auction on May 16th, the don, they are, the foundation is still looking for donations, so if you have maybe tiger tickets or lions tickets that you'd like to donate, or they're also going to have a wine wall where they're collecting 100 bottles of wine that are worth valued at maybe $20 or more, then you'll, um, like, it'll be some blind way that you pick the, the bottle, 'cause, and they'll have a couple very nice bottles in there as well. And then, you know, or a vacation cabin, or any sort of thing. The nice thing is these, these donations all benefit our city. So, you'll, please, you know, you can reach out to me, and I will help get it to, um, Keith Cunningham and the foundation. Uh, my email address is ann, what is it, a-perry@cityofpleasantridge.org.
It'll be on the screen under your email.
Oh, excellent. And then, um, so hopefully, yeah, let us know any, uh, donations. There's going to be a great silent auction again this year, so it'll be really fun, as well as the live auction. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, that's something I forgot. In, in all my long mentioning of password complexity and all that, I forgot to mention the fact that it's pretty difficult to remember all different complex passwords for every website that you use. There are tools that can help you with this, there are phone apps, um, Keeper is one. It will keep all of your passwords secure for you, and you can just reference them quickly on your phone. There are, uh, computer-installable applications that do this too. So, this will help you remember, or just at least use and input these very complicated passwords that will hopefully be different on every website. Um, and I don't think they will allow you to input 123456 just for your own protection. That's it, thank you.
Could you maintain my passwords for me?
I don't want that liability.
If there's nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.